Yeah, we don't fool around.
Fairly not.
How's everything going with you guys? Yeah, we don't fool around.
Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys? Yeah, we don't fool around.
Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys? Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys? Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys? Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys?
Yeah, something weird's happening, huh?
Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys?
Yeah, something weird's happening, huh?
Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys?
Yeah, something weird's happening, huh?
Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys?
Yeah, something weird's happening, huh?
Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys?
Yeah, something weird's happening, huh?
Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
How's everything going with you guys?
Yeah, something weird's happening, huh?
Yeah, we don't fool around.
Are pulled on the phone. Roger and I are banished to the phone because we're both recovering from COVID, so.
Good morning.
How's everything going with you guys?
The Board of Trustees meeting for the University of Maine system. And welcome everybody here that is present today, and we do have some trustees that will be on the phone. To confirm that, what I'm going to do is read some of the language for those that are participating by technology. Trustees participating by technology will be counted towards a quorum. To confirm trustee attendance and to ensure that the trustees are able to clearly hear and understand the proceedings and each other. The clerk will take the roll call for the members of the Board of Trustees that are on the phone.
Trustee Kane, can you hear us? Trustee Kane? Trustee Kate?
Hello, anybody?
Hi, trustee Kate?
No, this is trustee Donnelly.
Good morning. We're just about ready to start. Trustee Kate?
Both Emily and Roger were in the waiting room, and then there was some weird thing happening, so I don't know if they signed out or signed back in.
Okay, thank you.
While we're waiting for that, I'm going to read.
I'm back.
Oh, does Emily?
Good morning, trustee Kane, trustee Kate.
Good morning.
Trustee Kate?
Welcome back to.
Trustee Kate?
Okay, while we're waiting for trustee Kate, I'm going to read some more of the information here. The Board of Trustees meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube with closed caption available. So to assist the captionists, please speak clearly and into the mic if you're speaking with a mic in front of you here to ensure that you're heard correctly. And we'll do one more check on trustee Kate's. Okay.
Trustee Kate, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
All right, thank you. Our first topic for the day is going to be citizens' comment. And I'm going to, we have a very, very full agenda today, and we want to get in as many citizens' comments as we can. So we normally only allocate a half an hour for this, but today we're going to allow up to an hour for a citizen's comment. If perchance, you don't have a chance to speak, which I think you will based on the number of signed up. But there are a number of citizens' comments that's come in by email and letters, and some people were going to read those. We will allow time up to that one hour for those to be read in to the minutes. And those that we do not get a chance to read in after that hour will be appended to the minutes of this meeting, so they will be on the public document. And I can assure you, I and all these trustees have been reading these as they've been coming in over the course of this week. So if your particular letter doesn't get read, it has been read by the trustees, I can assure you of that. And we'll start today. You do have three minutes if you're speaking. And the first person will come up to the podium. We do have a podium for you with a mic. The first person I have on the list will be Elizabeth Powers.
Good morning. Associate Professor of English at UMA. Like many of my colleagues, I am disappointed in the mistakes made during the search for a new UMA president. I am not a faculty senator, but my voice was accounted for and represented in the Senate's May 11 votes of no confidence. As the search for a new president begins again, I want to be able to trust that the process will be conducted with integrity. New Nero Band-Aid policies for future searches do not address the core of this problem and inability or unwillingness to follow the ethics codes in place. Concerns about the future of the public universities of Maine and the lack of trust in the decision-making of the current system office are valid, and they deserve to be addressed fully. There have been words of accountability, but not yet full actions. Please acknowledge the depth of how far campus morale has been fractured. Grant a UMA community-led search process to start to build back trust. Please also reconsider the problematic logic that led to other current failures of the system, including the harm inflicted on the UMF community because of the unjust and unreasonable annihilation of women's studies and other programs. The people of Maine deserve a fully functioning public system of higher education, including access to strong liberal arts curricula. Thank you for considering these concerns.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next will be James Cook, and James has a statement that he would like to make, and then if we have time, James, we'll have you back reading some of the other ones in.
Thank you so much, Chair Gardner. I do have 13 faculty comments that we were sure they would have a voice today. Hope they get to be heard. Members of the board, my name is James Cook, and I am an associate professor of sociology at the University of Maine at Augusta. Now, as a sociologist, I do not look for explanations of events that lie in the inherent goodness or badness of any individual people. Instead, in my research, my teaching, and my service, I study systems, and I ask what structural features of a system lead to the outcomes we observe. So let us be clear. We are here today to identify to you a series of events that together constitute a disaster. The decision to pay a person six figures to not do any work for the system does not represent a victory, but the unfortunate cost to extricate ourselves from a disaster. But the system question is, how do we resolve the larger structural conditions that caused this tragic outcome? And the other multiple tragic outcomes our universities have recently suffered? For an answer, I look to two other systems facing disaster. The airline industry, which a generation ago suffered a wave of plane crashes, and the surgical profession, which a generation ago faced an onslaught of complaints and lawsuits due to errors in the operating room. Now, an individual approach would say that planes crash because of bad pilots, or that errors in the operating room happen because of bad surgeons. But in 1984, sociologist Charles Chick Perrow flipped our individual focus on such disasters. Instead, warning us to focus on the characteristics of a system that lead to such disasters. And Perrow eventually came to the conclusion that centralization of authority and power, while they might lead to short-term efficiency and speed in decision-making, highlight and create a vulnerability. When a few people or one person are in charge, survival hinges on the perfection of that one person or the perfection of those few people. But no surgeon, no pilot, no person is perfect. We each make mistakes. I make mistakes all the time. The key to avoiding tragic disaster is to distribute, he found, power and authority broadly with checks and balances and consultation and transparency so that no one person's inevitable mistakes will crash an entire system and lead to disaster. Now, the faculties and staffs of the seven independent public universities who have representatives here today, we are not here today as enemies that need to be constrained. We are your allies. We are a force that eagerly wishes to serve the state and peoples of Maine. We're not doing it for the money. We're asking you to enable us. Our strength and our potential does not lie in uniformity, but embracing a diversity of approaches. It is not time for the public universities of Maine to further centralize power and authority in response to observations of complaint, but a time to distribute power and authority in order to avoid future disasters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be John Reisman.
My name is John Reisman. I'm an associate professor of economics and public policy at the University of Maine at Macias, where I've taught since 1984. I'm retiring effective September 1st. Chancellor Malloy and President Farini-Mundi have made numerous statements promoting and endorsing equity and social justice. They have not defined those terms, nor has the board, to my knowledge. The faculty has not either. I propose the following definitions. Equity means equal outcomes. If a racial group, gender, or sexual preference makes up X percent of the population, they must make up X percent of any profession or group. Any representation less than X percent is prima facie evidence of systemic racism, sexism, and/or gender discrimination, unless the group is an oppressor class such as white heterosexual males. Representation over X percent is prima facie evidence that the group is an oppressor class. Social justice means the government transfers and redistributes income, wealth, and power from oppressor classers to oppressed classes. Oppressed classes have been the victims of systemic racism, sexism, and/or gender discrimination as proven by inequity and unequal outcomes. Oppressor classers include heterosexual white males and, by some lights, Jews and Asian Americans. I have asked the chancellor and the president to define these terms and to explain why my definitions are incorrect. They have not responded. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Lisa Laduke.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Lisa Laduke. I'm a professor of criminal justice at the University of Maine at Prescott Isle, and this September will be 20 years that I've been teaching there. This is also, you are hopefully going to be voting on reaffirming me as the faculty rep to the board for UMPi, which I started in 2016. Today, I'm going to do two things. I first want to read the statement from my faculty assembly that met Friday afternoon, and they unanimously passed the following resolution. "We, the faculty of the University of Maine at Prescott Isle, hear and share many of the concerns raised by our colleagues at the University of Maine at Augusta, their Faculty Senate Resolution of May 12, 2022, the University of Southern Maine, their Faculty Senate Resolution of May 13, 2022, and the University of Maine at Farmington, Faculty Senate Resolution of May 18. We support their efforts to have all of these issues addressed in a transparent and timely manner." I do want to, as an addendum, indicate that the decision yesterday to start a new search at UMA does not address even a small percentage of the concerns in those faculty resolutions. And then, secondly, I'm going to speak for myself as a faculty rep. You may find it odd that I'm using citizens' comment to speak to the board, but I've done that intentionally because I feel I don't have really other venues to do that. At the May 2 academic and student affairs subcommittee meeting, which is the only meeting of this board where there's a standing agenda item for faculty discussion. That's what it is called, discussion, not comment, like this this morning. I had several statements that I spoke to. I was interrupted while I was speaking, and then when I finished speaking, no trustee engaged with me at all. I was told that they had a very busy agenda item. A few staff, system staff members did respond to my statements, but there was no discussion at all. Yesterday, at the meeting that we had yesterday afternoon, the 90-minute, and I'm going to use quotes, faculty and student rep discussion period actually was 25 minutes of highly curated and controlled discussion. That's not engagement. I started in the summer of 2016 as a faculty rep, and the very first meeting that I attended was actually a faculty rep retreat in July of that year. And I remember then Chancellor Page attended, and there had been that spring a letter of concern to the board sent from all faculty, senators, and assemblies of the system. And the chancellor walked in with a copy of that, and he was not happy. And he said, "This should not be happening. You, as faculty rep, should be bringing these issues to the board." And I said to him, "And in what venue or place would we have the opportunity to do that?" And six years later, that question has not been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Michael Grillo.
Michael Grillo, University of Maine, medieval history of art. "The university crisis currently transpiring offers an opportunity for the University of Maine system to reflect upon its endless troubles and reset itself so to better serve the people of Maine. The votes of no confidence sweeping across the campuses focus on what at first may seem to be disparate incidents of mishandled search that failed to follow basic rules, retrenchments attributed to dwindling enrollments, and expensive program mergers that have been instituted by decree. But on closer inspection, they reveal a pattern of mismanagement radiating out from the chancellor's office, which is damaging the abilities of our universities to meet their responsibilities in teaching, research, and community development, and is also exposing the University of Maine system to wasteful lawsuits. The chancellor's office has promoted centralization in the name of efficiency under its move to unified accreditation. Yet the rationales for unified accreditation promote ideas that are already possible in developed means of cooperating in departments, departmentally approved course transfers, and block transfers of general education requirements. The actual purpose of unified accreditation has become apparent in the retrenchments at UMaine-Farmington, namely, in that each campus can be cannibalized to a point where it could not individually achieve accreditation, but rather, under unified accreditation, can appear as viable under a generalizing smokescreen masking over each campus's decreasing ability to offer robust degree programs to their specific constituencies. While the chancellor's office points to deficits causing these shortfalls, they're really speaking of structured deficits caused by their own overextensions to limited programs, poor planning, and general mismanagement. Innovative ideas for how to strengthen the university system need be examined by broader constituents beyond the administrators and their associates. Numerous studies over the years demonstrate how groups that have a greater heterogeneity are far more creative, visionary, and successful in implementing their ideas than any exclusive homogeneous group such as the UMS administration. We are thankful for the magnanimity of our major donors, but for their funded programs to succeed, they need be developed with meaningful participation of all players. While administrators may claim they involve faculty in program planning, typically it's only marginal yet in the important design stages, leaving the faculty to deal with the actualities of their otherwise untethered planning. The cost of these programs, rather than generating promised growth, leave gaping deficits structured into their startup costs and increasing radically when any rosy-eyed vision of growth fails to happen. Magnanimous donations, no matter how well-intended, cannot build sustainable programs without involving the faculty in all phases of their planning and implementation. As faculty, we embrace meaningful change and implore the Board of Trustees to reset their planning and stop enabling the chancellor's office mismanagement. Given the weakened UMaine system over the past three years through its bungled presidential search of UMA, the undermining finances at UMF, and the misdirection of donor-funded programs at USM and UMaine, and generally the tone-deaf refusals of meaningful collaboration, it's time to change of the UMS administration. Thank you."
Thank you. Next will be Jim McClimer.
Good morning and hello. I do want to acknowledge that the board has pulled the action on the Alphon College off today's agenda. I was going to speak about the serious problems associated with that. I was also going to speak in detail about the problems associated with merging the UMaine computer science with UMaine engineering that actually violates common sense, good judgment, and shared governance. You may have heard about an MOU that exists between UMaine Engineering and UMaine Computing. You do not know that it was done without faculty input. It has very serious problems, and it actually reaches levels of embarrassment. It's not how we're going to move forward. But I think your actions to table the vote is the first of many necessary steps to restore integrity around these issues. Sad thing is, it didn't have to be this way. Leadership didn't have to fail us, and they could choose now to start doing things right. For instance, item nine of the board book makes the false claim that the USM Senate and the AFAM response to the Mises MOU that seriously abuses the concept of partnership were not specific to the framework. The AFAM response was very specific. So specifically, we provided a better way forward, a way UMS continually tries to undermine. It proposed many times by many groups to use cooperating departments, a structure built from the ground up with academic integrity for cross-university cooperation. Universities are clearly uncomfortable. Indeed, they become anxious when co-oping departments are mentioned. They're so uncomfortable with this idea of change from their poorly-developed plans to using a clearly superior idea. Do you hear how condescending that sounded? I had a hard time writing that. I have a hard time saying it. Stop condescending to us. It's not going to help. It's not good leadership. Everything begins with integrity. Everything ends with integrity. It is your responsibility to ensure that system leadership is always acting with the utmost integrity. And that includes providing accurate information, not just stories that reinforce what you want to hear. You also need to hear knowledgeable faculty voices. You heard what Lisa Laduke had to say so clearly. Not just when you decide to ask, but when we have something to say. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Next will be Carlos Luke.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm Carlos Locke, Chair of the USM Engineering Department. Two weeks ago, we graduated 45 engineers. 90% of them are already employed in Southern Maine. That is one of many success stories from a program that started 35 years ago with the express purpose of providing engineering education opportunities, not exclusively, but primarily to the placebound population in the industrial center of Maine. In the years preceding the pandemic, we have grown at the steady rate of 8% per year, doubling our enrollment over a 10-year period. We are on a solid path to doubling again in the next 10 years. I will be before you again later this year with a proposal for a new baccalaureate degree in industrial engineering. This brings me to the topic of Mises, because doubling in 10 years is one of its goals, if not the primary one. The MOU that is before you this morning has one troubling attribute. On one hand, it states that USM will remain the home university of its engineering faculty, exercising full control over its curriculum accreditation and reporting through USM's organizational chart. That's a good thing. On the other hand, it states that USM Engineering will be a division of an entity that, rather than a statewide college, is now to be a renamed University of Maine College with its existing organizational chart. This troubling ambiguity has the potential for the University of Maine to take control over yet another USM program. This is what drew such visceral reaction from the USM Faculty Senate. We can't lose track of the unique mission of USM to the people of Maine. Our curriculum, our offerings, our services, and our synergies, inside and outside of the department, are what accomplishes our mission. In my expert opinion, grounded in 27 years of experience teaching engineering at USM, autonomy is the most practical way to protect our growth. An MOU that affirms our autonomy is welcome, but I came to learn that it is not necessary. The place of the engineering department in the USM organizational chart is already established by its governance document. The relationship with the University of Maine Mises should follow the article on cooperating departments of the AFAM contract, which establishes the framework for collaboration between units of different universities. I've written a couple of letters on this issue since the Mises discussion started 18 months ago. They have been included in the background material of your March meeting. I urge you to give those letters and my comments today your full consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carlos. Next will be Susan Finer.
Good morning. Chair Gardner, distinguished members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Susan Finer. I'm a retired professor of economics and women's studies here at USM. And I'm speaking to you today as the president of the Higher Education Retired Caucus within MEA. There are over 3,000 of us, but we don't know who they are because the university has decided not to share that information with us, although they did sell that list to Aon, a for-profit, vulture-capitalist corporation. My points here today are two. First, and most emphatically, believe the faculty. Yes, believe the faculty. We have millennia of university experience that embodies far more knowledge than any administrator who pops in, fails, and moves on. Believe the faculty. Faculty from every University of Maine system campus are invited regularly to serve on the evaluation teams of other universities and other programs. We're valued in that role. We are recruited in that role. And yet, here in the state of Maine, we are completely ignored. Do you think the state can ignore that level of expertise? I don't. Second, and this is difficult, look in the mirror. The composition of the Board of Trustees is a problem. Maine is home to hundreds, if not thousands, of internationally renowned artists, poets, writers, architects, inventors, and musicians. I could go on with the list of very, very distinguished people who live in this state. And yet, they are not called upon to serve. Instead, we keep choosing from a very narrow band of attorneys, of bankers, of businesspersons, and of the politically connected. That does not, that does not serve the state of Maine. Look in the mirror.
Thank you. Next will be Eve Raymond.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eve Raymond. I am a professor of English and Women and Gender Studies at USM, retiring September 1st. Sadly, I have to conclude that the failures that have happened under the current Sadly, I have to conclude that the failures that have happened under the current leadership were predictable. We saw the same failures occur at the University of Connecticut state system. I refer to a story in yesterday's Portland Press Herald, which records that, quote, "As governor of Connecticut, a position he held from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eighteen, Chancellor Malloy oversaw the consolidation of management of seventeen of the state's public colleges, universities, and the state online college." Quoting further, "The University of Connecticut, the state's flagship, was not included in the merger." Malloy created the Board of Regents to oversee the schools and began the process of merging the state's twelve separately accredited community colleges into one state community college with a joint accreditation. This is exactly the same trajectory the chancellor has undertaken in Maine and with exactly the same results. Faculty at three universities have risen up with one voice to oppose the merger of its separate universities under the dominance of one flagship university, in this case, the University of Maine at Orno. The votes of no confidence at each of these institutions argue that the effort to centralized operations in the system office, thereby shrinking autonomy at the university level, has diminished the ability of universities to deliver a quality education to their students. In the process, as you've heard, the system office has eschewed shared governance, taking over all authority to hire faculty and staff, attempting to transfer whole departments to Humane without due process, appointing multiple vice chancellors without input from faculty, in one case changing a job description after the fact, hiring an interim president of Humane Farmington, who oversaw the retrenchments of dozens of faculty in two thousand and fourteen, without input from faculty. This after retrenching nine of that institution's esteemed professors, thereby gutting the humanities and social sciences at a school whose reputation is known for its renowned teacher certification programs, hiring a president of UMA who was the subject of his own no-confidence vote, a fact the system never disclosed to the search committee in spite of ethics codes mandating such reporting. I could go on, however, I end with the proposition that efficiencies are one goal, but they should not be the highest goal of a quality higher education. The Maine State Legislature, in its wisdom, passed a law mandating separate universities in the University of Maine system for good reason. I submit to you that it is this law that is currently at stake here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Grace Levitt.
Good morning. My name is Grace Levitt. I'm a high school Spanish teacher. I'm on leave, serving as president of the Maine Education Association, representing nearly twenty-four thousand members from pre-K right up through our higher ed folks, as well as retired educators. My esteemed colleagues in higher education can speak to you much more eloquently about the many problems that we are facing in our universities of Maine and throughout the system. I'm here to focus primarily on the impact some of these problems are having or going to have, that I'm worried are going to have devastating effects on the education system in our state. We are in a crisis, and the crisis is getting larger. We have shortages in our pre-K twelve schools that are immense. MEA has been calling for addressing these problems for years, and it took a global pandemic for people to finally hear that we are in a crisis. There are vacancies that cannot be filled. This is not the time to be cutting programs for preparing teachers to enter our public education system. We are doing everything we can, and at last, other stakeholders are as well, to do all they can to recruit people to the field of public education. It is a wonderful profession, but it has suffered throughout this pandemic, and we need to do much more. This is not the time to be cutting any program, and I know we have great programs at the other universities in the system, but the impact on Humane Farmington is just going to be devastating. Women's and gender studies, not only do our university students identify as LGBTQIA+ but these courses help prepare our future teachers for the diversity they will encounter in the classroom and for their students' families. Geography and environmental policy planning and history, this affects any future educators who are planning a concentration in social studies, as well as all students as they reduce courses for general ed requirements. Modern languages. I'm a Spanish teacher, and this has been a huge frustration throughout my forty-three-plus years in the classroom. I've had language teachers reach out to me about the loss of the world language positions, the elimination of the program at Humane Farmington. All students should become proficient in at least one other language and another culture. The world right now shows how important that is. And yet, we don't have enough teachers to teach those students, and so we should not be cutting those programs. There are other losses there as well that are going to have a devastating impact throughout our public education system in Maine. This is the time to be building programs, not cutting them. I hope that there is some way to reverse some of these decisions. I worry about the consequences of some of these other problems that are being addressed today, and I worry about further cuts and certainly the loss of those who are retrenched. Thank you for letting me address you today.
Thank you. Next will be Paul Johnson.
Good morning, everybody. It's great to see everybody in person and not having to do things via Zoom for once. First of all, I'd like to talk about the no-confidence vote that was passed by the University of Southern Maine on May thirteenth and make sure for the record that that gets in. In some ways, we think that this is an exceptional event that's just occurred, but I imply that we've been having very, very serious events over the last three years in the University of Maine system. You've heard from many of my colleagues talk very, very eloquently this morning. We, all of us, can work better. Over the last several years at USM, AFAM has met regularly with the president and provost, bi-weekly meetings. I'm not saying always the president and the provost agree with what AFAM says, but we work together. We collaborate. We listen. We share ideas. I would say over the last three years with Chancellor Malloy, every time he's come to USM, he's not listened. He comes with an entourage, and they preach, and they tell us we don't know, and we don't understand, and we're wrong, and just trust in us. We know what's best. Just trust in us. It's very hard to trust. In the last visit when Chancellor Malloy was here, I said, "We've lost trust in you." He said to me, "Well, we need to build that up." Good point. That's really, really hard when time after time after time, he comes to USM and talks rudely to faculty, rudely to the president in public. This has got to stop. It's got to stop. Many of us have met with you as Board of Trustees over the last year, saying, and you said to us, "We will meet with you. We will talk to you." You were opposed to us becoming members of the BOT. We're not looking to prove you wrong. We're offering to offer our experience, our knowledge. I've been at USM for twenty-three years in the School of Social Work. I don't know everything, but I know a lot about the program. I know a lot what's going on at USM. My colleagues have a lot of experience at their various campuses. They serve on Senate. They serve in their departments. They serve as chairs. Use us. But we cannot continue the way we are. Chancellor Malloy in November said to me publicly, we want to protest about President Cummings leaving, and we were very, very upset here. He said, "Nothing lasts forever." Well, I'd say, Chancellor Malloy, nothing lasts forever. Sir, it is time for you to resign. We need new leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Chris Bates.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I'm Chris Bates. I'm a faculty member at the University of Maine at Augusta in the humanities. I will disappear in three minutes. There have been troubling developments at the University of Maine system and within our universities. And it seems odd because usually, strong leadership, healthy leadership, can keep these things from happening and safeguard the work that we do. That doesn't happen here any longer. A quick, brief chronology. In two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, that academic year, we knew COVID would land soon on our shores. The system office thought this was a great place, a great time, a great moment to throw the retirees' healthcare out the window. It just must have made too much sense. Show me a more vulnerable population. I don't think you can't. You can, rather. And now you just double it up with COVID. So what happened there? This is all systemic problems from the top, okay? Concerned mayors and unions fought this. Alumni were ready to withhold their funding from a system they dearly loved because of that action. Pickets were put in place, and UMS leadership retreated. Another example, the retrenchments at Farmington. They were really quite unfortunate. Prioritizing temporary costs and monies for the law school over human personnel. PR, yes. People, no. My third quick chronology point is going to be my dear campus and the failed UMA presidential search. It's not so much about the four candidates that we advance without being able to list who we think we really want. It's at the top when they choose the person they think can become a wonderful puppet. So UMS Board of Trustees had emphasized the importance of integrity in presidential searches, and UMS Leadership Office let us know that someone was bigger than the Board of Trustees. Maine deserves better. We shouldn't have to pay for silence. We're an education facility, for goodness sakes. I think these items show what has been happening in the last few years. And it isn't about each case. It's about the leadership, their response, their lack of thoughtfulness and care. And in closing, I'd just like to say, in this time of austerity with people losing their jobs, it is unwise, it is indeed inappropriate to continue the contract of the leadership sitting in the office of the chancellor. Let Maine prosper.
Thank you. Next will be Mahindran Gosheen.
Hello. Good morning, colleagues and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm Mehda Farashi, professor of mechanical engineering at USM, a professional engineer in the state of Maine and a member of USM's Faculty Senate and its Executive Committee. My remarks are focused on the formation of the statewide Maine College of Engineering, Computing, and Information Science, short as Mises. The formation of this college has been formulated in a January twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two MOU. I have it in three pieces. Segment A is the MOU states that the existing College of Engineering at the University of Maine will be renamed as Maine College of Engineering, Computing and Information Science that Mises has just talked about. The current USM Engineering programs will participate in Mises as a division of engineering within Mises. In short, we can have two points. One is that Mises is a new name for the Humane College of Engineering. Point two, USM Engineering Department will join Mises as a division. Combination of these points results in the conclusion that USM Engineering Department will be a de facto division of Humane. Part B, the MOU also states that the substance of this MOU was communicated to the faculty of USM Department of Engineering on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It should be emphasized that. One, the idea of Mises was only presented in that meeting to the USM's engineering faculty. No faculty input on this idea was solicited from the faculty. Or two is that in that meeting, nothing about the inclusion of USM Engineering as a division of Humane, of a Humane college was never mentioned. Part C of my comments is about why USM's faculty, myself included, have requested from the chancellor the issuance of an MOU in order to make sure that nothing similar to the MBA experience would happen again at USM. The prepared MOU does not provide such a guarantee. This MOU has been rejected by USM's Faculty Senate, its Executive Committee, and AFAM. You can see it in the Board of Trustees materials in the March meeting materials. I would like to suggest that the board seriously considers the concerns raised by USM's Faculty Senate, AFAM, and USM's Engineering Department, so that Mises could be established on a strong foundation and as a true statewide partnership. Thank you for your time and attention to this critically important matter.
Thank you. Next will be Tamara Benson.
Hello, my name is Tamara Benson. I'm a student at the University of Maine and Orno, and I'm here to represent a student organization called Divest UMS. Divest UMS would like to sincerely thank you for the Investment Committee's recent commitment to a formal plan for the complete divestment of the university's assets in the fossil fuel industry by two thousand and thirty. Although we have no way of knowing whether or not our presence as a student organization influenced this decision, the decision has made us feel heard and valued as students, activists, and human beings. In committing to a divestment plan, you have shown us that you care about the futures, our futures, and the future of the planet. Thank you for listening to what we have to say and taking a significant step toward creating a better future. We plan to continue tuning in to Board of Trustees meetings in the future, and we look forward to watching as the University of Maine's investments become gradually more sustainable and ethical leading up to two thousand and thirty. Throughout our time in Divest UMS, we have found that divesting from fossil fuels will actually make the University of Maine more money in the long run. During the spring two thousand and twenty-two semester, Divest UMS asked a student, a group of students from an economics course to work on a reinvestment plan for the University of Maine system. They created a strategic reinvestment plan in sustainable and ethical industries that would make the university more money than its current investments in the fossil fuel industry. This reinvestment plan has been condensed into a presentation and a report, and we would be happy to share these resources with you if you so choose. As you know, the climate crisis is upon us. We're already experiencing severe warming here in Maine, which can be seen especially in our lack of snow and the frighteningly vast warming of the Gulf of Maine. It has been proven that this warming is mainly caused by the burning of fossil fuels. Investing in an industry that has caused this much destruction to the planet and the beautiful state we call home, as well as our own communities and the ecosystems we depend on every day, is extremely harmful. Committing to a plan to divest all assets from the fossil fuel industry is not only a good economic decision, but it is also essential for the future and well-being of the earth and everyone who calls it home. By committing to a divestment plan, you are helping to move the needle away from a certain climate destruction toward a more hopeful future. It is also a well-known fact that the fossil fuel industry is notorious for funding the suppression and burial of climate science and any scientific findings that might undermine the ability of the fossil fuel industry to keep shoveling dirty money into their pockets. Since the University of Maine has recently gained the status of an R1 institution, it is especially important that we do not continue to fund institutions who suppress scientific research at the expense of our futures. My friend Max is going to continue my statement.
Thank you, Tamara.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I'm Max McDonough. I'm a student at UMaine Orno as well, and I'm just going to continue the statement. In addition, the University of Maine mission statement claims that the university is committed to, quote, "addressing the complex challenges and opportunities of the 21st century," end quote, and the, quote, "sustainable use of Maine's abundant natural resources" and "improving the quality of life for people in Maine around the world" and "promoting responsible stewardship of human, natural and financial resources," end quote. It seems that investing in such a harmful industry is quite contradictory to the mission statement. Divesting from fossil fuels, as you have said you intend to do, will protect the University of Maine from being a hypocritical institution, especially now that we are R1 institution. Not only is committing to a divestment plan ethical and financially smart, but it is also a legal obligation. Investments in the fossil fuel industry, oil, gas and coal by colleges and universities can be considered illegal since they violate Maine's Uniform Prudent Management of Institutional Funds Act, or UPMIFA, a state law that regulates how nonprofit institutions can spend their endowment funds. Under UPMIFA, college and university endowment managers are bound by three duties: to consider charitable purposes of the institution in its investments, to invest with prudence, and to invest with loyalty. By investing in industries that have led to disinformation campaigns about climate change, lobbied against climate action and sold products that threaten the prospects for a more just, fair and promising world, the University of Maine was undermining its own students and faculties' work toward a sustainable future. Committing to a plan for complete divestment from fossil fuels is a legal obligation of the University of Maine. At last, the university will be honoring this responsibility. We as students, environmentalists and human beings, hoping for a livable future, are overjoyed that the University of Maine's system has committed to a complete fossil fuel divestment plan. But as we breathe a sigh of relief, we are also taking this decision with a grain of salt. Our futures are on the line, and we do not plan to stop advocating for our futures. Even though this decision is extremely significant, we plan to keep showing up to these Board of Trustees meetings to see what you are up to in terms of taking action on your plan for fossil fuel divestment. We hope that you will see us as collaborators and resource for ideas and feedback rather than a silent audience. We are excited to see what you do next. Again, we would like to extend our gratitude for this commitment. It truly means the world to us. You are committing to investing in a better future, and that is incredible. We'll see you soon. Sincerely, Divest UMS.
Thank you, Max. Also, we have Ryan O'Leary on fossil fuel.
Hello, my name is Ryan O'Leary. I'm a rising junior at the University of Maine-Orno and a major in social work. Thank you so much for listening to us today. I would like to heed my time as all of the remarks from Divest UMS have already been stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I'd like to just make a comment to the folks from fossil fuel divestment. Yes, we did listen. Yes, your voice was very important. There was over a year's worth of deliberations by the Investment Committee and the Board. And it was very important that we understood your points of view and also you understood our challenges as we looked at the whole situation. So thank you very much for doing that. And our last speaker that I have listed is Ned Kennedy.
So it's Dr. Ned Robert Nason, representing University of Maine at Fort Kent, both as Assistant Professor of Chemistry and as faculty representative to the Board of Trustees. And I just have a short statement to make to say that we also, as faculty at the University of Maine Fort Kent, have been deeply contemplating the concerns surrounding the various searches such at UMA and at USM and also the situation surrounding retrenchment. Right now, it would be fair to say that all of the faculty share these concerns. We have not yet issued a formal statement in any regard because we are still, in fairness to all faculty, discussing the nuances of how to proceed. But again, just to summarize, to let you all know that your voices are heard at the University of Maine at Fort Kent as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ned. We have about 15 more minutes allotted for this, and we have some statements that were sent in and are going to be read into the meeting, and I think we'll start with James Cook. He has quite a few to read.
Thank you so much. I will do my best with the time allotted. There are 13 voices that I represent, and they may not all fit. This comes from the UMA Social Science Program faculty, writing to the board to express its agreement with the two votes of no confidence from the UMA Faculty Senate, the vote of no confidence by the USM Faculty Senate, the vote of no confidence by the UMF Faculty Senate, the statement issued by students during a UMF 24-hour sit-in, the statement of the University of Maine Faculty Senate Executive Committee, the statement of the University of Maine at Machias Faculty Senate, and this morning, the UMA Professional Employees Association statement, which you should be shortly receiving. Over the last two weeks, longstanding structural problems regarding secrecy, exclusion, centralization of power and resource inequality within the University of Maine system have been brought into sharp focus by the abrupt retrenchment of popular and productive faculty at UMF, the revelation of unethical practices in the UMA presidential search. Make no mistake. As the many voices you hear today make clear, and some you will not hear, make clear, these are not the totality of the problems facing the University of Maine system. They are the straws that have broken the camel's back, revealing in public what we have heretofore recognized privately, that the breakdown of shared governance in the system has led to a breakdown of trust and community. The UMA Social Science Program stands not only with the UMA Faculty Senate, but with our colleagues and students across the system who are voicing discontent with the processes that exclude critical voices and lead to tragically flawed outcomes. Regarding UMA in particular, we ask that the Board of Trustees take public responsibility for this breach as a body and also, in the new search that will occur, to grounded in system transparency, centering UMA community members and listening to UMA voices. More generally, we call for a new era of shared governance that demonstrates through transparency and distributed decision-making a respect for the diverse knowledge, expertise, cultures and needs of the students, staff and faculty at the seven universities of the University of Maine system. Would you like me to continue reading? Okay. Lorian Lake Correll is an Associate Professor of Sociology at the University of Maine at Augusta. She writes, "I regret I cannot share my statement in person today, but due to the ongoing global pandemic and extremely high community transmission rates, I feel an in-person event is inadvisable." She writes, "I am writing today to express my solidarity with UMA, USM and UMF resolutions." And she also reiterates that there is a breakdown of trust in community. I am, for purposes of time, shortening her statement. Although the Board of Trustees has rightfully acted on UMA's first resolution, the second, along with resolutions from USM and UMF, is still outstanding. UMS faculty across the system feel dismissed, disrespected and disregarded. And I hope the Board of Trustees will take decisive action to begin repairing the relationships that have been damaged this year. Dr. Kate Corlou. She thanks you for hearing her statement. She is an Associate Professor of Psychology at the University of Maine at Augusta. And she wanted to speak to the negative repercussions of the ethical violation which occurred during the 2021-2022 presidential search. As you're aware, critical information was withheld from members of the search committee and therefore from the UMA community. Whatever the intent or lack of intent behind this ethical violation was, the process of the search was completely undermined. And there are substantial repercussions to this ethical violation that must be addressed to ensure our university is able to move forward effectively. The withholding of critical information, she writes, from the search committee has dealt a severe blow to the morale of our institution. Many of us feel betrayed by the system leadership for failing to uphold the ethical standards and integrity of our presidential search. Additionally, in the past weeks, as we have asked and waited for system leadership to substantively address our concerns, we have received nothing but blame shifting and empty apologies that have not remedied the problems currently facing us due to this ethical violation. This has left many of us feeling disappointed and dismissed. The distrust, the discouragement and the low morale we are experiencing was caused by system leadership. The onus of responsibility to mend this breach of trust, therefore, falls on the system leadership. And she writes, "I stand with the UMA Faculty Senate," and I have shortened her remarks for the sake of time. Professor of art, Peter Precourt. Is it all right if I continue? Thank you, sir. Writes a series of facts and then a series of questions. Facts: The University of Maine system has instituted much-needed diversity, equity and inclusion policies. Fact: On October 15th, at a presidential search forum at UMA, the system rep and consultant group were specifically asked by a concerned UMA faculty member about a previous withholding of information regarding a vote of no confidence at the University of Wisconsin system. The consultant was asked, "How do we avoid another University of Wisconsin debacle?" The UMA community was told to trust the professionals. The UMA faculty member's public statement clearly presented the UMA community's concerns about information regarding a vote of no confidence being withheld during the search. But despite those expressed concerns, the pattern of withholding vote of no confidence information from search committees continued. Fact: The two highest-ranking members of system leadership involved in the search, who share the same gender and sex and have similar high income levels, learned of the Faculty Senate and student no-confidence votes in a potential candidate who also shares the same gender, sex and has a similar income level and did not share information with the diverse 14-member search committee. Fact: When the vote of no confidence came to light, a University of Maine Chancellor/Board of Trustees spokesman initially stated the search committee chair did not intentionally withhold the information from the committee, despite the fact that the campus community had specifically voiced concerns about this issue. Questions: Does the University of Maine system stand by the statement that the nondisclosure of crucial information was not intentional? If so, can the Board of Trustees explain how one unintentionally withholds critical information? Question: How does the Board of Trustees reconcile its support for diversity, equity and inclusion when all of the search committee members who were diverse in sex, gender identity, race, ethnicity, religion, age and income differences were denied information that would inform their search? I'm shortening this for time. Question: There is talk about putting new rules in place regarding searches. We had previous rules that were ignored by those in power. How can we believe new ones will be followed when previous ones were ignored? Question: How will the Board of Trustees make things right with the search committee members, at least two of whom have shared with me personally that they feel shamed and betrayed by this process? Would you like me to yield or read another statement? Thank you, sir. This statement comes from Ellen Taylor, who is a professor of English. Her statement: "UMA is a vibrant institution born of the optimism and the hope of the 1960s. Our mission, to, quote, 'transform the lives of students of every age and background,' to, quote, 'provide excellence in student support, civic engagement and professional and liberal arts education,' end quote, requires system leadership with both compassion and creativity. We should have faith in our system. We should trust in it to have our students and best faculties' best interests at heart, so then we can dedicate ourselves to teaching and scholarship and service. We are dismayed at the system that has led us to this dark place, where we no longer have trust in our leadership. We ask that the Board of Trustees recognizes the damage that has been done and the transformation that is needed to repair it." Thank you. The Humanities Department at UMA issues a statement: "We wish to express our deep concern over an ongoing trajectory in the University of Maine system that seeks to dismiss and diminish humanities education. In humanities courses, students learn critical reading, writing and analytical skills that help them make better sense of current events, problem-solve issues in their communities, ask and explore complex questions, interrogate the credibility of information circulating online and hone a special workplace communication skills. To that end, efforts to undermine humanities ultimately undermine the professional and personal aspirations of the people of Maine and by extension, compromise the communities in which they work and live." May I continue?
How many more do you have?
Well, I have 13, and these are people who were all told that they would be able to read. Thank you. And the next one after this one is an adjunct. The full-time teacher-education faculty. I am up shortening this to the UMA Teacher Education Program, stands with the UMA Senate in asking the Board of Trustees to take responsibility for this breach of ethics and make reparations by walking back the contract with the candidate. Thank you. And number two, allowing our university to conduct a new search during this next academic year, preferably with our current interim leadership at the helm. We would also ask that the Board of Trustees communicate directly with our Faculty Senate and interim university leadership to work out an appropriate timeline for these actions. Only by legitimately addressing these concerns can confidence and trust in University of Maine system management be restored. I have one more. Who's an adjunct? Thank you. And there are actually others. Okay. Margaret Wheeler, who's an adjunct faculty member at UMA, says, "I am writing in support of the vote of no confidence submitted by UMA, as well as those of other colleges in the system. The failure to uphold the requirements of the pledge signed by all search committee members promising they would, quote, 'guard against inaccuracies, carelessness, bias and distortion made through either emphasis or omission of information is grievous in nature. And simple apologies do not sufficiently address the issue. I believe that this omission of information should not be minimized since we now know that the critical information about the chosen candidate was omitted from consideration by the majority of the committee. The process lacked integrity. It lacked transparency, and as a result, there can be no confidence in the decision made. But this hot incident highlights the recent approach to enacting or forcing changes on the system without sincere engagement of stakeholders. The University of Maine system is rapidly being reshaped by retrenchments as opposed to engaging in the democratic process of shared governance. The aggressive, top-down approach to making changes leaves faculty feeling dismissed, disrespected, disregarded. Further impacts of this leadership are hurting other colleges in the system. And I stand in solidarity," she writes, "with the University of Southern Maine and the University of Maine at Farmington, both of which have issued their own statements articulating concerns in recent weeks. Ultimately, these rapid and aggressive changes don't just impact faculty and staff. They impact students and the important role that they have in building Maine. It's about the students." Thank you. I do have I do have other statements, but I think you're asking me to step down.
Yes, James, thank you. You did a great job.
Okay. So there was a student who will not be heard today because of this time. And I think that's an issue that we need to notice.
James, I stopped you at this point because we do have one more that will be read in by Susan Finer, that's why. There are many more, yes. Thank you. Susan?
Good morning again. I'm still Susan Finer, but I'm reading the words of Lorraine Lowell. I graduated from USM when it still had a vibrant liberal arts program to include but not limited to a fabulous music department, as well as theater, philosophy, history, and English. When I graduated from USM in 1987, UMF was then noted for the stellar liberal arts program and had continued to be nationally noted for its solid programs until, when? What's going on? Why are faculty being fired? Where is the transparency? I worked for UMS as a library assistant, an hourly wage earners position, for 32 years. When I retired, my last work date was January 2021, my wages, when adjusted for inflation, were less than my starting rate in 1988. As an economist, I will footnote the accuracy of that statement. For those 32 years at the University of Southern Maine, I haven't seen this kind of chaos or lack of transparency. The chancellor is not serving the state of Maine well, nor is the Board of Trustees. The chancellor should resign, as should at least one member of the board. If transparency and honesty can't be restored and an inclusive spirit of governance be found, the entire Board of Trustees should then consider resigning. Respectfully, Lorraine Lowell.
Thank you. We have, we have many other letters that came in. They will all be appended to the minutes of this meeting. And as I mentioned at the start of this, all the board members have had them and I'm sure have read them. We've been talking about it for all week as they've been coming in. I wanted to take and do something a little bit unusual for a minute here. I'll try to do it in my three minutes. I wanted to address all the commentary that came in during this session. First, by starting out and saying, thank you. Your voices are heard and are important, and we do listen to them. There are two areas that I kind of want to summarize from what I've heard. One of the main themes that comes through all this is how we do things. The how has to be addressed in a way that we are more collaborative, we're more inclusive, and we are talking and listening and having more dialogue. I hear that. Unfortunately, I'm terming out as a board member, but I'm sure the new Board of Trustees and the new chair will, will take that and do a lot with it moving forward. It's very important. But the other part is the what? What are we doing and why are we doing? And I want to just touch on a few things. I'll start with the University of Maine, Augusta search. Yes, there was mistakes made. It was done wrong. And that will, and is being looked at very hard, along with how do we improve searches in going forward? But I want to also point out that using those same rules, those same processes, we had a very successful search at the University of Southern Maine. So the rules, and I think one of the speakers mentioned it, the rules may not be so much the problem, but how do we adhere to them and work with them and use them? And that will get looked at very, very hard going forward. I would also point out, we've heard a lot about three people on the search committee who knew about this and didn't talk about it. To be transparent and to be fair, there was a fourth person who knew about it, who came from the University of Maine Augusta. And that has not been talked about. I'm not going to bring, go any further in it to say, but you should make sure you get all the facts before we jump to too many conclusions. The other area that I would like to talk about is the whole area around, we have to make changes at the university systems and, and the cost of it and why certain programs. At the University of Maine Farmington, that program, that, the humanities program and that got the cuts made in it was very difficult, very painful, and no one wanted to do that. But I've also been told that, you know, and I've heard it today, you know, the chancellor made that decision. I just want to point out, the chancellor did not decide what cuts were made at the University of Maine Farmington. That decision was made by the president and the provost at University of Maine Farmington. Well. And the fact that we had to make cuts is a fact that the University of Maine Farmington, over the last five years, has been running in the red over $20 million. $20 million to keep the University of Maine Farmington going for the last five years. Projected this year, coming up, the budget today, will need another $2 million coming from somewhere to keep the University of Maine Farmington going. And then their projection going forward is $2 to $3 million per year to keep it going if we don't make changes. That same problem resides in many of our small campuses. It also resides, and will reside soon, in some of our large campuses. They are draining their reserves faster than they're being replenished. So there is a real need for all of us, all of us, to figure out and work together to turn the tide here. Unified accreditation, as much as some don't like it. If we don't have unified accreditation, the board was told by the creditors that some of these small campuses would not be accredited. It wouldn't be accredited today if we hadn't started down this path. One of the key things about accreditation is you must be financially and physically stable and able to fund the things that you're doing. If you can't do that, you don't keep your accreditation. So there's a lot to this, and I could go on. But the chancellor is doing a lot of the things that the board wants the chancellor to do. Now, maybe we've got to do it a little bit differently, and we need to make sure that we hear from all of you. No question about that. We have to hear all the, all the inputs, all the decisions that have to be made, need to have the full 360 degrees of input into it. But at the end of the day, the folks on this board, their number-one responsibility is to keep it fiduciary, the fiduciary responsibility to make sure we can fund and operate our universities. We need everybody's input to do that. But you should know, and you're going to hear it later today, most of our, most of our universities are relying on stabilization funds, which are funded by the stock market. Now, if you think the stock market is going to throw off a whole lot of money over the next two or three years, we'll be okay. But if it doesn't, we've got some serious problems. All of us. So I just want to put it on the table. I want to thank everybody for all their comments. But no, we're all in it together. This isn't, and it sounds like, and maybe it has been and it shouldn't be, a we, a we and you. It's us. This boat will go, will float or will sink depending on how well everybody works. And all the campuses need to be working together on this because there, there isn't really a real strong financial picture for many of these campuses. Yes. 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 No question. There's, there's all kinds of things that have to be looked at. But there are also times when you actually do need outside points of view and experts, as we all know. One of them is a strategic plan that you're going to hear about today that's being worked on. We must have a strategic plan for the system. If we don't, then we're running around putting money on the latest, greatest, best idea. We need to know where this system is going to be in five years and where it's going to be in 10 years, so that you can actually build a plan and put dollars behind it to make sure you're driving something that is going to meet the needs of the students, of the faculty, of the state of Maine. And we have to look at all that. And there isn't enough expertise in all of us to do that without some outside perspective because the world is very competitive and it's very much a small world today. We are losing students in the state of Maine to campuses all over the country and around the world. There aren't enough students in Maine to keep what we have going, going. The demographic challenge on the horizon is significant. You should be aware of it. You probably know it. But if you look at the incoming students and our percent that we tend to get from the graduating, we don't have enough to keep going everything that we're doing. We have to draw in students from around the country and around the world, so does every other university. So we must be competitive and we have to be of one voice. I hear you very loud on that. I know the incoming chair hears you very loud on that. We need to be of one voice. We need to work on how we do it, but the what's not going to go away. That what is real. Yes, good. Thank you. There's money there, and it would have. And I want to just respond to that. If we had instead said to the law school, you have to stay in this building you're in today, to deal with the financial issues and the things that were fundamentally wrong with that building was much more than the $13 million. This is all, this is all. Well. Who knows? There's a lot of, you know. Who knows? So to bring this to closure, and I do appreciate your, your voices. I'm trying to be very respectful to it, but I have to manage the time too. But I want to kind of, two things. One, all the decisions made in the past, we can't go back and change them. We can only look at going forward, and we've got to make good decisions going forward. To help with that, available publicly for anybody who wants to see it today, recently put online is a data book with all the trends and all the things that we're looking at under a strategic plan, including all the different campus challenges, the financials, you, you name it. It's pretty much in that data book. I encourage all of you to go online and look at this. You can find it if you go to the main.edu website. And you go to the tab that says Data and Policies. And under there, you will see a link to the USM Strategic Plan tab. Go to that tab, spend some time looking at the data on your own university and the university system. We have to work together. I hear you. Unfortunately, I got to leave because my 10 years are up. But I can assure you, the new Board of Trustee members, the new chair, we will work together on this. We'll figure it out because if we don't, there'll be changes coming that nobody can stop, and they'll be much greater than anything we talked about today. Thank you. Oh, yeah. So thank you on the, getting my instructions here. Thank you. I think, yeah, I think what we're going to do, because we, we have, we have very tight schedule, and we're going to move fast when we come back. But I want us to take a five-minute break, please. Okay? Five minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you could, please take a seat. All righty, we're going to continue with a few more remarks that I have to make. We're going to start now. I'd like to start out by thanking President Cummings and the University of Southern Maine for hosting this board meeting. I mentioned it last night, but I wanted to mention it again today. Thank you for hosting us here and it's always great to be on this campus. But in particular, it's very nice to see all the construction and all the, all the work going on. So it's very nice. Thank you. I'd like to also, I mentioned it in my, in my comments earlier. There are, there are two trustees on this board that will be terming out after this meeting is myself and trustee Earl. And we do have three new trustees who will be joining the board. They're here in person today. I'd like to introduce them or just mention their names. We have Pat Flood, who's here. We also have Donna Loring, who's also here, and Barbara Alexander. And thank you for your service and I'm sure you're going to have an exciting, exciting first five years. There'll be plenty to do. Yeah. The next item under my remarks is the election of the board officers. It's your tab two in your book. And I'm going to turn this over to the chair of the nomination committee and that would be trustee McMahon. So the floor is yours.
In, in the interest of clarity, I'm going to read my remarks. Nominations were solicited by written request to all trustees. The original nominating committee comprised trustee Ames, trustee Michu and myself met on April 6th and on April 11th, we conducted Zoom conversations with candidates for chair and vice chair. Two officers were selected. The nominating committee was provided historical data for officer positions and lengths of terms for the past 30 years, and this document is in the board package. This was used together with a list of trustees by seniority. Subsequently, on May 9th, one of the to be nominated officers withdrew. Again, nominations were solicited by written request to all trustees. Subsequently, a nominating committee consisting of trustees Martin, Martin, Michu and myself was convened on May 16th. That nominating committee recommends trustee Riley for chair and trustee Ames for vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have trustee Riley and trustee Ames for chair and vice chair. I'm going to read the proposed resolution and that is that the board of trustees approves the board of trustees slate of officers for the year 2022, 2023 as presented. Could I have a motion? Moved by trustee Earl, seconded by trustee Dobson. Ellen, could you take the roll call vote of the trustees on the phone first?
Certainly. Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Trustee Kate?
Yes.
Okay, and for the trustees here in the room, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no opposed, the motion carries. Congratulations. I was watching to see if you did. You'll do great things, great opportunities and great things in front of you. The next comment under my comments is I want to turn it over to Kelly Martin for a few minutes, who is the chair of our investment committee, just to say a few words on, on the investment statement that we've come up with.
Thank you, Chair Gardner. First time with a microphone in a long time here. Be dangerous. Thank you. I'm happy to share that the investment committee has approved both short-term actions and long-term, long-term goals towards fossil fuel divestment. University of Maine system has led its peers in investing in divesting in coal and adopting a strategy that applied environmental, social and governance factors in investment-making decisions. And now we have added fossil fuel divestment to our investment guidelines. The ESG strategy alone had reduced the management investment pool's exposure to fossil fuel from 3.2% in 2016 to 1.9% in 2021. In continuous, in continuance with our commitment to addressing climate change and our portfolio objective and in adding, and in adding fossil fuel divestment, the University of Maine has set the following goals and actions with the understanding that at all times, the board of trustees acting through the investment committee will act in accordance with sound investment criteria and consistent with its fiduciary obligation. I'd like to, to, to proudly say that we had, we have already acted on the short-term actions. There was two actions under that was to divest from all direct equity and fixed income investments in fossil fuels by May 31st, 2022. That was done on May 10th. So from the operating fund, we had IRNM, a short-term bond fund that had fossil fuel exposure. It was sold on, on May 10th. And the guidelines for, for all three portfolios, the MIP operating fund and pension fund can no longer purchase from the carbon 200 list. We had another separate manager which did not have fossil fuel holdings, which was Westfield. And on May 10th, Tracy Elliott gave instructions to Westfield to refrain from owning or buying any stock from our account. So all great, all great things, our long-term investments are long-term goals. Be to monitor the actively managed commingled and new fossil fuel exposure and the growth of fossil fuel free alternative investment funds. Assess investment managers with regard to their commitment to sustainable and fossil-free investments. And when prudent and appropriate, select managers with such strategies and select managers who best meet UMS risk, return and diversification and fiduciary, fiduciary goals while being mindful of ESG and climate goals. So I want to thank the many, the many people that did collaborative work on this. There were lots of contributors. I want to thank the students from divest UMS for their advocacy and, and charge, you know, bringing, bringing, making sure that, that we were being climate friendly in our investments. I want to thank the investment committee that this work started. It started many, many years ago before I was on the board, 2013. And I think it's always been continuous push. We've always, we've always felt that our investment statement is a living statement. And we move towards, towards more sustainable investments as the environment evolves. And as, as we know, that's happening, we're right in, in the midst of that. And really want to thank the investment committee for their, their work over the last two years. I think our first discussions began with, with the green team and then divest UMS back in June 2020 and, and also to our consultants. So I think we're, we're in a good place right now and, and look forward to continued work.
Thank you, trustee Martin. Are there any of the trustees who would like to comment on, on this hard work that was done and done well?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Roger Kate here, and again, I apologize that I couldn't be there in person today. First of all, real thanks to, to Chair Martin and the committee for all the hard work they've done on this to get us to this point, a difficult issue. They've have worked on it for two years and, and reached this consensus. A special thanks in particular to the students. I think it's fair to say that if it were not for the persistence of these students and their predecessors over the last several years, we, we, we wouldn't have gotten to this place either. My, my only thought is that, that given the seriousness of the risk of climate change, I, I wish we were a little more impatient than we're being. As I understand it, the, our, our goal now is to be completely divested in any funds by the year 2030. And I, I wish that we were more impatient than that and had a, an earlier, earlier goal. Again, a goal is an aspiration and I, 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 to aspire to be completely out of this by 2030 is, is a long time. But I recognize that we've come a long way. I understand that the investment committee has come to this conclusion and I respect that. I just hope that the students will continue to, as they said they will, continue to monitor this and continue to remind us of the importance of this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Kate. Trustee Rotondo.
I too want to thank the investment committee and the students. We heard you and I'm glad we are where we are now. I would, I would love to see us set a goal that's a little closer to where we are now than 2030. But I, I think we're on the right path. And I would recommend that the strategy brought forward by the investment committee be taken up with a vote at the next.
Board meeting? Thank you, trustee Rotondo. Yeah, it's in the privy of the, of the committee to make this policy change, but I do hear you and think that being such an important policy that it's, it should come before the, the board as a full vote. And I'll turn to the incoming chair and say, that's your ball.
Done. Next meeting.
Just add more generally to the issue of climate change and sustainability, that there is a tremendous amount of good things that are happening on campuses at Farmington, UMO, USM, other places as well, which they're developing for the future, the capital investments and the type of buildings that will help us in this, this fight, this sort of fight for our lives, so to speak. And I just wanted to make sure, I know we'll talk about it in more detail, but that this should be part of this, our strategic plan as a, as a larger commitment, to quote Tony Crotisi, we're only one half of 1% of all the landmass in America in higher ed, but we're 100% of America's future leadership. So we need to keep that in mind, that we need to represent our students in showing that sustainability is important.
Right.
I think we're making good progress and we can keep going.
Right. Walk the talk, right? Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move now to, to acknowledge an outgoing student rep. Salvatore, Salvador, Salvatore Cardin, Cardinali is leaving us after two years of being a student rep. And I do have a certification here, certificate of appreciation for his dedication and leadership. You became a student rep on May 2020. And now it's May 22, it goes by quick, doesn't it? Thank you. I have, you come up. That's all I had under the chair's comments and I'll turn it over to the chancellor. Yeah, sorry.
Do this story time to introduce our representative, the graduate representative, Sophia.
We're going to do that a little bit later in the day. That's okay.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to touch on several items and try to keep it as short as I can because I know we have a very full agenda. Beginning with the issue of COVID, which none of us signed up for. We have continued, I think, stellar performance at our universities with testing, positive testing rates substantially lower than the entirety of Maine or the community testing numbers. We are thankful that students, faculty and staff exercise the ability to be vaccinated and to be updated. We are also grateful that we got to the end of the semester, quite frankly, with, 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 with respect to increasing numbers of infections and reinfections that have started and have played themselves out here in Maine and in New England in general. We also are looking ahead to what our COVID experience will look like in the fall. We have made a public pledge to students, faculty and staff, as well as the broader Maine community, that, that we will have an advisory rules on how to reopen issued by June 15th. That's our deadline to share with the public with respect to those plans to, to, to open in the fall and what rules will be in place vis a vis updates of vaccination, vaccination, housing rules, although we do intend to increase and you'll see in the budget substantially the number of students who are eligible to be housed in our campuses as well. So that is, that is one issue. You will hear shortly from Ryan with respect to budgets. I do want to touch on several points with respect to the, to the budgeting of this year. As has been stated previously and publicly, our efforts to bring a budget, budgets in alignment and quite frankly, prepare for what looks like increasingly a recession. We did in the, on the weekend of March 12th and 13th, negotiate with AFAM an agreement to settle most of the contract and specifically to reach a planned retirement program with that organization so as to eliminate if possible or limit to the greatest extent possible any retrenchments that would have been reflected in this year's budget. Approximately 113 individuals opted for planned retirement in year one. There is a second tier of that in year two. We are currently estimating approximately 40 individuals to participate in that second round. Obviously, those numbers are open to revision, but we do have strong indications from people that they are intending to opt in that out year. What does that do? It took the possibility of larger scale retrenchments off the table, limiting retrenchments to approximately 1% of, of the full-time faculty contingent. And, and I think has presented each campus with a toolbox to face what is unfortunately continuing to be a shrinkage in population. Earlier this year, I, I indicated to our campuses what, what we should be doing is comparing our student body to the 2019 numbers as opposed to the COVID experience. We are running at all of our universities short of that number. UMP has a increase, but it is related to a specific program that has grown mightily, but does not produce the same revenue flow that the full-time equivalent students do. But does not produce the same revenue flow that the full time equivalent students do in our campuses. But for instance, Humane is behind. Farmington is behind, Fort Kent is behind. UMM is down since the twenty nineteen numbers, but I should note is up substantially. With respect to their new manner of operation. UMP I've indicated is up for this is incoming students is up for the year. But again, I would remind you and USM is down. These are substantial reductions, which will have to be reflected in budgets are in spending plans post adoption of the budgets, which I presume will be today. And I think that we are in a better position for our ability to have gone to AFAM to settle that agreement with the understanding. That this was in in taking into consideration the economic, the economics and student ratios. That needed to be considered in the long run. With respect to other happenings, I would say that a charge was given with respect to infrastructure. And three years ago, and that infrastructure charge it has been embraced. As you can see on this campus, but not only on this campus, on other campuses as well. And as previously stated earlier today, in downtown Portland, a substantial reinvestment. At a level not not seen in decades in our system is underway. And that that needs to continue. I will say with respect to Farmington, for instance, that they will be the recipients of eight million dollars in additional bonding. Capacity to be spent on their infrastructure as all of our universities will receive additional dollars with respect to. A reinvestment in infrastructure as well. With one other point, we are, we have. Worked with the board of visitors to change slightly our interface with the board of visitors. Obviously, this happens from time to time. And since we have a leadership change, it may happen yet again. But the board of visitors and myself will be meeting and others will be meeting in the weeks following each board meeting. To go over what has happened and what we are looking forward to in the next meeting or what decisions may have to be made. In the next meeting and we have offered to attend and be part of any board of visitors meetings that they would like us to be. With respect to the university that they represent. And so it's a slight, it is a change, but I think it's one that will be helpful to the board of visitors to keep them updated and. Give them a a full knowledge of what's coming in the subsequent meetings and look forward to that. And with that, I'll stop.
Thank you. We're gonna move now to the. Yes. Okay, I was gonna do that anyways. All right, we're gonna move to tab four, which is a vice chancellor research and innovations report. Turn it over to vice chancellor and president.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to be here. The focus for my conversation today, which I have abbreviated, so board members, you have a longer presentation in your books, but I'll hit a few highlights. Is focused on what it will take after a year of working with colleagues across the system. What will it take to actually enhance? Our research, development and innovation engagement system wide. And so I'll just focus on three areas. Sorry, it's okay, Heather. We it can be the old one. Okay, yep, we did some real time shortening of the presentation, but in any case. Focusing on three areas and I'll just hit a couple of highlights in each of the three. First of all, the work that I've done with colleagues at the University of Maine and across the system is very much focused on how do we expand? Access to research and innovation infrastructure that exists at Humane and at our other campuses more widely. So we can go to the next slide, please. Oh, all right, sorry. So these are the three areas which are included in my report in your in your slide deck and you can look at the details and in more. In more in a more leisurely way, but I'm going to skip a couple of slides and get very focused on. What we're doing in in a few of these areas. So one thing that we're working to do, and when I say we, again, it's colleagues at Humane. And increasingly colleagues and other institutions as we as we find out who's interested in in these activities, but. We have opened up access deliberately and intentionally to the offices of the vice president for research and the dean of the graduate school at Humane. The offices in particular of research development, research compliance and research administration, all of which are vital. To advancing a research agenda for faculty. And in in addition, we've talked about research instrumentation and access to to entities working very closely with the system on advanced research computing. Security and then a little bit of of information that's new today, our focus on innovation and entrepreneurship. That we're trying to expand now more broadly. So again, skipping through some of the detail. The big focus in the office of research development, which I mentioned on the previous slide. And that office is led by Jason Sharland, who is the director of that office. He's also a senior advisor to me on matters of research. Is to help us help faculty and staff across the system bring in more externally sponsored funding. And so that's a deliberate activity that doesn't just happen. It requires everything from training and preparation to do grant writing. To the support of the preparation of grants to actually doing matchmaking and finding good sources for grants and then matching them to faculty interests. And so Jason has done a phenomenal job. He's had fifty eight system wide faculty who participated in the Grants Academy, which is meant to help advance this work since twenty nineteen. We have proposal writing teams and then those teams are supported by staff in Jason's office. For everything from the NSF career awards to various NIH opportunities to Epscore and EDA opportunities and beyond. So we really are simply trying to step up availability of help. And support for a lot of this activity. And in the past year, Jason tells me we've had one point two million come in for various campuses outside of the University of Maine, who have been working with. Staff in that office. So it's a wonderful way to bring together researchers who have interests that overlap. With that, okay, sorry, trying to scale it back. I want to next go to something that we heard very loudly, sorry. Something we heard very clearly when when I did interviews with presidents across the system, when I visited campuses. As part of the chancellor's visits and spoke directly to faculty and what I heard uniformly, I think is quite exciting, but it's about engaging undergraduates in research. The faculty with whom I've been speaking across the system see this as a way to integrate. Their instruction with their continued work and scholarly activity, their continued efforts to build their own portfolios. And I think this is a distinction for our system. I think this is a way that we can stand out. If it's possible to truly deliberately intentionally engage undergraduates skillfully, which is happening all across this system. In research as a part of their course activity. In in some places, it's happening as a part of general education. Where faculty are bringing their scholarly expertise together with students' interests and creating a level of engagement and connection that is wonderful. So. Really looking for how we can as a system amplify what we do in that category. One thing that we're doing is is the RLE activity that you've heard about from previous presentations funded by the Alphon Foundation. That has now been piloted at the University of Maine this pat this current, the academic year that we're ending. With good numbers of student involvement, good numbers as far as we can tell so far on retention, but we're looking at all of that. And now the other campuses have the opportunity to to engage with Alphon funding and do something that makes sense for their campus next fall and next year. So that activity is underway and various teams have been have been a part of that. Another area that has been important for us, and this is moving into the innovation discussion that I just wanted to touch on. Again, lots of detail in these slides. Happy to talk further. But a part of sort of the cycle of research and development is the very foundational basic work that people sometimes picture. Initially, when you think about advancing research, but for a public university system, being able to move that well beyond those basic. Findings into translational work into the actual application in practice and policy. Into making a real difference on very specific questions for the state. All of that needs to be part of the cycle that we have here at the University of Maine system, which means that. Pieces that haven't been built up and amplified over the years, I think can be now. And we're going to again, look at what Humane has and look to engage across the system. So one thing. Is Humane's National Science Foundation funded ICOR project, which is really about helping researchers and students. Take what they're learning from their research, learn about how to essentially commercialize it or bring it to wider use. So it's a translational and then sort of a of an innovation activity. And we have had forty two teams with this funding over the last three or four years. We've been able to start to bring in some external funding, but what these teams do is they come together to learn how to be entrepreneurs. With various kinds of national tools and so forth. So that's active here. Certainly, excuse me, certainly at the University of Maine, but increasingly engaging with colleagues beyond. The second step after you do the sort of the basic training of ICOR is to move into what we call MIRDA, the Maine Innovation Research and Technology Accelerator. So again, an activity that's been in place for a number of years, seventeen teams have come through MIRDA and seven new startups have resulted. So we want to be a system, I believe, that has the opportunity for faculty who are interested at various parts of this cycle of innovation to step in and be a part of things. The research opportunities for undergraduates, I began to mention that earlier. The RLE is, I think, the main highlight there. There are other programs at Humane and at the system campuses that are doing this. I think we stand to be a place that can have a developmental view of undergraduate engagement and research and scholarship. They can come to us from from K twelve, perhaps with having had some experience. Move into early career experiences as first year students. By the time they are seniors, they can do capstone courses and internships and co ops and be ready to enter our workforce here in the state of Maine, well prepared and well engaged in in these basic skills. There's a lot of that happening already in RLE, as I mentioned. We're working to maximize funding opportunities. Again, I won't go through these slides in detail, other than to say there are a lot of internal opportunities to work with. And we have system wide calls as well. Quite important has been the work for. The congressionally directed spending. So the earmark activity under the leadership of Sam Warren. From the system has just taken off and our congressional delegation has been a wonderful partner in helping our campuses find. Good matches between their interesting ideas and what the agencies have to offer. So there's a lot here to take a look at, and I just want to say that it's wonderful and interesting to be talking to people across the system. To look at how we can help to advance something that's so important for all of us. So with that, I will stop.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the trustees? Thank you, President Fernand. Good, good overview. We're gonna move now to tab five. Which is the vice chancellor of Finance and Administration and Treasury Report. Now I'm gonna turn it over to. To to vice chair chancellor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna be covering three items this morning. I'm gonna talk about investment returns. Then we're gonna cover the final. Take this off. Then we're gonna cover the final FY twenty two forecast and then I will wrap up with presentation, final presentation of the FY twenty three operating budget.
Ryan, you may have to read a few of these numbers, some of our.
Yeah, I will. Yep, I'm not sure I can even read them myself from here. I'll I'll start with investment results first. So the board materials include March investment results for the three UMS portfolios. My update is going to include April results as well, preliminary May results. For the calendar year to date, we continue to see significant market volatility. Due to inflation, rising interest rates and other geopolitical events. So let me jump right in. The managed investment pool with a market value of four hundred and thirty five million saw a gain of point five percent in March. The fiscal year to date loss of two point three percent. The MIP is estimated to have lost an additional five and a half percent in April. And another two point four percent in May through May the thirteenth. The pension fund with a market value of twenty three million was flat in March. For the fiscal year, it is down point five percent. The pension fund is estimated to have lost an additional four and a half percent in April and two. Excuse me, and one point seven percent in May, again, through the thirteenth. And then we get to the operating fund. The operating fund with a market value of three hundred and forty four million and a more conservative asset allocation. Saw a loss of point three percent in March, an estimated loss of one point three percent in April and an additional point eight percent. In May, again, through last Thursday, bringing the fiscal year to date market loss to eleven point two million. After factoring in the annual budget that we we rely on for investment income of two point four. That brings our fiscal year losses to date of thirteen point six million. If you slept through my entire presentation, the only thing you should pay attention is to this next sentence, which is. By way of comparison, last year, I didn't stand here, I stood on Zoom and talked about the market returning twenty one million to us through the end of. May, exceeding our budget at that time by eighteen million. That represents a thirty two million dollar swing since this time last year. Going to jump into the final FY twenty two forecast and so. As a reminder for some of our newer trustees and and our soon to be new trustees. We do a current year budget forecast with three of them a year, one in October. One generally in the January, March timeframe and then a final one of in May, just checking in on how we're doing in the current. Fiscal year. Not a lot of substantial changes between forecast two and three that should be expected by the time we did the second forecast. We had a good feeling for what spring enrollment looked like and so. If we saw major changes here, we we'd probably question, you know, why we didn't, why we didn't see those earlier. I'll I'll walk through just a couple of these and then again, happy to answer any questions. The budget column, again, not that you can see all the numbers, but the budget column represents the budget that was approved by the trustees. Exactly a year ago. At that time, we were forecasting a budget deficit of about ten million dollars that we were closing through the three. Free deficit resolution funds that we have over here, which is the higher education, emergency relief funds, campus reserves. And then system budget stabilization funds. So again, I'll walk through a couple of these just to make sure that folks can understand what what's in your packet. University of Maine, University of Maine and Machias originally started off with a a forecasted budget deficit of one point five million that they were closing through reserves. That forecast grew. Mostly due to enrollment changes. That's where we have the big changes in that first forecast. You know, we we predicted enrollment, you know, more than, you know, almost a year and a half before folks are actually coming in. So it's not unusual to see. To see adjustments at that first forecast. So for the University of Maine and Machias, that increased up to nine million. It has gone down through the second and third forecast now stands at a little less than six point five million. You can see how the campuses resolving that through a six point five million dollar transfer from their own reserves. I'll skip down to Farmington, again, originally forecasting about a three point one million dollar deficit. That deficit grew by more than two million dollars through the course of the year, again, mostly due to that. Declining enrollment. The campus is resolving that deficit through actually three, three, three methods here. One is about two million dollars worth of federal funds. There is a small transfer from some early college funds that were carried over. And then a three million dollar transfer from the system budget stabilization fund. And that is actually part of the budget vote that you will get later. The the committee had originally or the trustees had originally last year approved a one point five million dollar budget stabilization fund transfer. And we've had to double that to get the campus back into balance. Then I'll draw your attention just to two more lines. The law school, again, originally projecting a budget deficit, just a little less than two million dollars. They've brought that down to about one point seven million in the first two forecasts. And that is down to one point five in the third forecast. Later on, when I talk about the FY twenty three budget. You'll see that that deficit number is down to one point two million. So just want to acknowledge the the great work that that the dean, that Nicole Dimitri, the the full team at the law school has done. They're executing the plan that we talked about a couple of years ago. They're executing the plan that we talked about a couple of years ago, which was at that time, we were looking at three and a half and four million dollar consistent deficits. We thought that if we put more resources there, enrollment would go up. And you see, you see that happening exactly as as we projected. So kudos to them. The draw your attention to two more lines here. Employee benefit pool is is the biggest change since you saw this last. When I was here in in March, I guess it was, we were forecasting about a five hundred thousand dollar deficit there. That deficit was actually planned. You'll see in the forecast now, we're projecting an eight million dollar variance there. And that is, that is a hundred percent tied to the retirement incentives. So as we've said all along, the retirement incentive would be funded by the system through the employee benefit pool. And then the savings would accrue to the campuses to the extent that they didn't replace positions or if they replaced positions at a lower salary. All of that benefit would accrue to individual campus budget lines. And you see the impact of their unrestricted investment income. Just in the time that we put this slide together, we lost another two and a half million before we even got back to to print. And so so you see those challenges right there. Good with that. I want you in one other. Yeah, we'll flip over to the presentation while you're while you're doing that piece. I'll just mention again, included in your in your materials is a is a travel and contributions update. So again, as a reminder, we've talked about this often, Public Law two thousand and eleven, Chapter six sixteen requires the university system and lots of government agencies to report annually to the board on travel and contribution costs. We do that as part of our regular budget updates. Those how we're doing in FY twenty two is part of your forecast. And I'll I'll touch on two thousand and twenty three as I work my way through this presentation. So presenting the FY twenty three budget for final approval today. This is our first time since two thousand and nineteen that we're actually doing this back on our regular schedule. So certainly I'm excited about that. This is a slightly condensed version of the budget presentation that some of you have seen. Me give three to four times depending on depending on on your positions. The full slide deck with all the materials are included in the board, in the board packet. Want to thank, before we jump into the details, certainly want to thank the chancellor, the presidents, the CBOs, the campus communities for all of their involvement in the budget. This is a year long process, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit. A huge thanks, especially to the F F T committee. This, the committees reviewed this budget on at least three occasions, asked a lot of good questions. And all of that feedback, the feedback that we got from presidents and campus communities and CBOs, F F T, no doubt has resulted in a better product at the ultimately at the end of the day. I'll note as well, the budget that we're presenting for your approval today really represents our best estimates of enrollment based on everything that we knew when we built the budget together. We've had lots of conversations recently about some of those challenging budget numbers that are enrollment numbers that we're continuing to see. We know we've got a lot of people working on that, but, you know, I want to, I want to throw out that warning. It may not be the last time you see the FY twenty three budget. It's possible that we'll be back in the fall for adjustments. So that wouldn't be unusual. So here's our budgets schedule, and I work my way through this pretty quickly. But I often talk about this budget schedule really kind of in three parts. The first part is this window where we work with the campuses and the CBOs specifically and really just put together those kind of foundational building blocks for putting together a budget. So what do we think the appropriation is going to be and what is your share as a campus going to be of that? What are we seeing with healthcare trends? And there's about, you know, debt service, all of those type of things that we put in and we give out to the campuses. And then starting October, we kind of flip that over to the campuses. And so we've we've collectively decided these are these top line assumptions that we should have. We turn them over to the campuses and then the campuses go through their budget build process. Ideally, lots of conversations on the campus that ultimately worked their way up to budgets being due into the system in that late January, early February time period. And then we enter this final stage, which we've been in for a little while, which you can see results in three different F F T meetings. Today, we talked about the, you got the second of of two forecasts. We do one year and five year capital plan. So the one year capital plan is on your consent agenda today. Actually, at the July meeting, we'll talk a little bit more about the five year capital plan. And then ultimately, we're here today for the B O T budget approval ideally. Talk a little bit about some of the highlights that that you'll see that you're aware of. Budgeted credit hours are one point one percent below the FY twenty two budget. They're up slightly over FY twenty two actuals. We continue to be challenged by low occupancy rates on several of our campuses. Incredibly grateful for the ongoing appropriation increase, the additional one time support that we're getting that will allow us to freeze in state undergraduate tuition coming up. And then, you know, certainly one of the highlights unrestricted capital investments are increasing by a little more than ten percent in this budget. This is the summary that we use to kind of wrap all of this up. I'll note for FY twenty three, there are just two campuses that have a balanced E and G budget. In this case, it's UMA and USM. You can see everyone else is in a deficit position. Everyone is in a deficit position on the auxiliary side. Collectively, again, you can see about eighteen point eight million in in budget gaps. We close that again through, in this case, two transfers because most of the higher education relief, the emergency, the HERF funds, we call them, have been exhausted either in twenty twenty one or twenty two. So now we're down to campus reserves or system reserves. And you see about twelve point three million coming from campus reserves. Nearly all of that is from the University of Maine. And then we are proposing four transfers from the system budget stabilization fund that collectively total six point five million. It's important to note that the six point five million in transfers do does not represent the requests that we received. We received requests that exceeded eleven million dollars from campuses, all the campuses, including Farmington, Fort Kent, Presque Isle. But again, because of of market conditions, we simply didn't have the resources to fully fund all of those requests. And so nonetheless, with the transfers either from campuses or from the system, all of the campuses do reflect a balanced budget at the end of FY twenty three, again, based on everything that we know today.
Ryan, sorry to interrupt you. Could we go back just one slide? I just want to point out from my earlier comment that that total of eighteen point eight million is what worries the board of trustees greatly. And the board of trustees are the fiduciary responsible body for the whole system. So as long as we're running negative numbers there, it's hard for the trustees to get time to think about other things. So it's really important as a total system and and campus by campus, we figure out how to balance those budgets because then you can start to think about the bigger and more important things that we need to get to. But if every meeting we come to, we're talking about negative numbers and drawing from reserves, which are quickly going down, it's hard for the trustees to focus on anything else. It's the most important thing we are accountable for. Well, that's just wanted to tie that into my earlier.
Yeah, and certainly completely agree with your comments, Mr. Chair. You know, as again, as I started off this slide, again, you can see here nearly every single campus in a deficit position. And what I'll show you on the next slide is system budget stabilization funds that have essentially been wiped out. And to the extent that we show a balance there, if you remember my investment report that I started this off with, that was negative thirty million. We've got ten point seven available. So we're actually in negative territory. So imagine we started off two thousand and twenty four, and again, everyone is in that negative position. It won't be trying to figure out which four or five or six campuses we help out. We simply won't have the resources and all of those campuses will be forced again to make additional difficult budget decisions. We started off, you know, again, it probably wasn't even a year ago where I was touting the fact that we had nearly twenty four million dollars in the budget stabilization fund. It was the highest amount that we've had since the budget stabilization fund was created in two thousand and eight. We originally approved a committee, the board originally approved about three point five million dollars of transfers out of that fund in fiscal year twenty two because of budget circumstances at Farmington, at Presque Isle, at Maine Law. We increased those transfers, at least at the two, the two campuses here. So roughly six point six million going out of the fund in two thousand and twenty three and two thousand and twenty two. Another six point five million going out in two thousand and twenty three left us with a balance of ten point seven. And again, we felt it was important at the time that we left a balance in there for two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five. But market conditions have essentially wiped out that number. Stocks are doing well today, but I'm not sure that they're going to, they're going to make up for the kind of losses that we've been seeing recently. So we will enter the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty four budget planning process, which will start in in just a few weeks with what looks like no funds in the system budget stabilization fund. This is a historical perspective of of state appropriation. So certainly incredibly grateful for the support we received from the governor and the legislature. State appropriation represents about forty three percent of our E and G operating budget. Really, we've talked about this often in the past, a decade almost of completely flat appropriations. You know, it's certainly no, you know, not not complaining about that. At the same time, our appropriations were flat in that two thousand and eleven to two thousand and sixteen or seventeen window. We certainly had a lot of peer institutions and neighbors who are experiencing cuts at the state level. So even though it was difficult, we were grateful for that, for that flat support. And then, you know, certainly over the course of the last five years, focusing in on nineteen through twenty three, significant increases. Governor LaPage had an increase in his last budget. Governor Mills has proposed a three percent increase in all four of her budgets. We were fortunate to get three of those increases, including a one time seven point nine million dollar increase. So what you can see there is a thirty one million dollar increase in appropriations over the last five budget years. Nearly twenty three million of that has been to our base budget. So again, really grateful for that. That does not include any MEIF funds either. The one, you know, it's hard to call eight million dollars a negative, but I will just note that, you know, the seven point nine million that we received to freeze in state tuition in two thousand in the fall of twenty three is one time resources. That was originally going to be a tuition increase, which would have been an ongoing amount. So again, you can imagine we're going to have, ideally, we'll have these budgets balanced and we'll drop, we'll go into two thousand and twenty four. And we're immediately going to be in an eight million dollar deficit when those one time dollars go away and we don't have the tuition dollars there. So, you know, we're grateful for that. I think the students will be grateful for a flat tuition, but it is going to create some budget challenges when we start building the two thousand and twenty four budget. Just just touch briefly on the main economic improvement fund. As I noted on the last slide, the governor and the legislature did increase the MEIF fund by an additional two million in the budget. It brings us our base up to about nineteen point three million. And that is the first increase in a number of years. So incredibly grateful for that. Huge thanks to President Ferran Yimundi for her work and and certainly for Sam Warren for the tireless advocacy that she does in the legislature. I talked about the enrollment numbers earlier, just up point three percent over FY twenty two actuals. The individual campus details for both enrollment and occupancy are included in your in your board materials. Again, I'll just note a couple of highlights here. I noticed the modest increase, I noted the modest increase over FY twenty two. Out of state credit hours now are about thirty three percent of our total credit hours. You'll see the modest reduction in early college credit hours and then the significant increase in CBE and AP credit hours down in the lower right. As I noted early on, occupancy rates continue to be a challenge at some of our campuses. It's not, it's not everywhere, but where it is a challenge, it is, it is presenting some some budget difficulties. The chart here will reflect, you know, our, what is hopefully our return to normal operations. You can see we're back to about ninety one percent occupancy rate in two thousand and twenty three. That is roughly in the ballpark of where we were pre pandemic in in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. So certainly appreciate appreciate that shift. But again, working to, you know, working to with the campuses to try to identify some innovative ways to address occupancy rates some of our campuses. During our F F T discussions, heard lots of really good initiatives from campuses focusing on more singles, more suites, what are the, what are what are students looking for that they're clearly not getting right now on some of our campuses? And so certainly excited to see some of those initiatives move forward over the summer. FY twenty three recommended tuition rates. So again, I did touch on this, but I'll certainly highlight in state undergraduate and Canadian rates are flat for the upcoming year. Flat more than half the years going back to twenty to two thousand and twelve, which on one hand is great. On the other hand, it does create stress on the revenue side. Out of state and graduate rates you'll see here are generally tied to CPI rates. I should say CPI rates when we were building the budget, not necessarily CPI rates if we went out today. So we know our tuition, our raw tuition numbers are low by any standard. We've looked at, you know, other Maine private institutions, peer institutions, other New England schools. Our rates certainly can compete with anyone. But certainly, it's also critical that Maine residents are able to afford those rates, even if they are low. So we've consistently, going back even to two thousand and eight, we've tracked our in state tuition number as a percentage of Maine per capita income. And certainly happy to note that since two thousand and thirteen, that has been on a steady decline down to less than fifteen percent of per capita income today. Last few slides that I'll touch on, funding depreciation has been a focus of the board as long as I have, as long as I've been with the system. FY twenty three, we required a five percent increase in capital funding from all the campuses. So I'll just touch on this piece just for just for a couple of minutes. When we started tackling this this issue, you know, it's easy to set these lofty goals, but when you don't have resources, you quickly get behind. And so one of the things that the board focused on, and especially the F F T committee focused on in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen was really making incremental progress. And so we focused on what each campus was spending on capital investments, and it wasn't a lot. And we said, despite these difficult financial situations that we were having at the time, we're looking for a three percent increase in what you were spending. And the next year, we asked for a three and a half percent increase and then four. And we worked our way up now to minimum five percent increases. We are seeing the benefits of those investments in this budget up more than ten percent over FY twenty two levels. E and G and auxiliary budgeted capital investment stands at twenty point five million. Another ten million or so in debt service. We funded about seventy five percent of total depreciation expenses. That is up six percent from FY twenty two. Again, it wasn't too long enough, too long ago that, you know, we were funding closer to fifty percent in some years, even even less than that. Important to note as well that certainly the twenty point five million that is here and the details that are part of that capital plan. Important to note, you know, that does not include the additional debt service that we're getting from the state. It does not include private dollar amounts. These are monies that campuses are are base budgeting in for critical deferred maintenance. So that twenty point five million that we talked about on the last page, you can see that there in the lower right hand column. So we'll give you a breakdown by campus and by type of project. I've cut them out of this particular presentation. Those of you that were at the last F F T meeting, this slide was followed by all of the individual details of how those two point three million was being spent. this slide was followed by all of the individual details of how those two point three million was being spent, this one point two million. All of that is in your materials. It's part of the one-year capital plan that will be on your consent agenda a little bit later in the, in the agenda. And again, my last, just my last couple of slides here. I'm going to focus mostly on the rolled-up E and G and auxiliary summary, but just wanted to just note a couple of highlights of the, of the E and G budget. First is that the budget figures that you're, you're seeing here, they're starting to return to normal. You will see large percentage increases, not so much a reflection of huge new investments that we're making, but more a reflection of COVID numbers that were down. And so we're getting back to what is normal. And so when we do that, you see big increases. Travel is a, is a perfect example. It's not that we're traveling more than we were before the pandemic. In fact, we're traveling quite a bit less, but we're traveling more than we were a year ago and certainly more than we were two years ago. I'll note as well, compensation. Former Chair Sam Collins used to always focus on what our compensation was as part of the budget. That time it was, it was sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent. It's up to seventy-two percent now, and some of our campuses, it's as high as eighty-five percent. And so I just wanted to use that note, really just for me to, to thank all of the, the folks that spent, spent months negotiating the various labor contracts. And, and that thanks goes from, you know, the chancellor getting us started early, our, our labor relations team, our great partners from the unions. You know, really difficult discussions and certainly no one walked away with everything that they wanted. That's probably safe to say on both sides. But going into this budget and asking this to committee, asking the board to support a budget, if this was all still in flux, if we still didn't have labor agreements, would be really, really challenging. And so just again, want to thank everyone for, for all of that work and all of that certainty that those agreements provided us. So I'm going to skip over again to the, the, this is the rolled-up E and G and auxiliary budgets. Just a couple of, emphasize a couple of points here. Tuition and fee revenue is up two point three percent in this budget. You can see that at seven point seven million in the top right. Dining and residence hall revenue is beginning to bounce back to those pre-pandemic levels. Let me see, both of those are up roughly ten percent. Last year was a similar picture. They were up ten to twenty percent from what we were looking at in two thousand twenty. So certainly nice to see those numbers come back up. And, and then the line certainly that I'm, I'm most excited about there is the state appropriation line. A fourteen million dollar increase, about a seven percent increase over the F Y twenty-two base. Again, some of the large percentage increases that you see there really, again, more of a reflection of us getting back to normal operations, dining operations, working their way through supplies and services line, for instance. And there's some software in there that results in some of the, some of the larger increases that you say, you see. Then my final slide again, where I, where I ended the budget forecast, which is an update on where we are in travels, meals and entertainment, memberships, gifts, donations, sponsorships, a part of the regular reporting requirement. So you'll see the individual numbers for the system and the campus are included in your materials. This simply reps, represents the rolled-up versions and, and, and provide you that update again that's required as part of chapter six sixteen. And with that, happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ryan. Very good. Questions for Ryan on this budget? A lot of us have seen it three or four times, as you've mentioned, as it's been built through the year. But yes, trustee.
Ryan, it's unrelated, but it is related. When you look at, you showed how much the state has actually appropriated or gave to the university. What is the latest revenue forecasting projection? So it would have an effect, what we might be able to get from the state. And my second question, is there a structural gap in the state's budget?
So I think the state is going through that, that structural gap analysis that you know is required by statute. I think they go through that over the course of the next month or so. So I, I don't know where that is now. I think previously they had forecasted not a huge deficit because of the rate that revenues were increasing. So the, I was peeking at my watch because I was trying to remind myself what date it was. The forecasting committee, which I'm proud to be a member of, meets, will meet again in, I believe in October and will look at where state revenues are now. I know that they've continued to, continued to be strong, but there are more and more conversations about the potential for recession. Even in those forecasts that the revenue and the economic forecasting committee had previously done, there was concern about the out-years. The numbers showed revenues continuing to increase, but you know, that, that feeling you get when you've gone ten years or so without a recession. And so there's, there's been significant talk about what those out-year numbers are, and I expect we'll get a little bit more clarity as we start building this two thousand twenty-four budget.
Thank you.
Okay. Other trustee man?
Ryan, your budget for energy costs was put together a few months ago and in the interim, energy costs, I'll say have gone out of sight. So how comfortable are you with the numbers? I think it's about a ten percent increase. How comfortable are you with those numbers?
Yeah, I think it's like anything, we'll, we've had some conversations about that. I would expect that there will be various places. You know, I think three years in a row, we've had to make supplemental, we've had to bring a supplemental budget in front of the board in, in October or November to make adjustments, mostly generally in the past, it's been for enrollment. But we certainly have energy on the radar as well. So we'll continue to track that over the course of the next couple of months. And then I'd expect when, when the committee or when the full, when F F T is back and, and, and the, the board meets in the fall, it's possible we'll be back with adjustments for that line.
Trustee Erwin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan, can you go back to this, the appropriations slide, the, the line graph that showed state appropriations?
Yep.
Thank you. I, I, one of the things that we haven't really talked about, I know it came up in, in F F T meetings, but the, the effect of inflation. Looking backward first.
Yep.
Looking forward is a, a much scarier exercise, but just looking backward, the effect of inflation over that same period of time. You have a slide that we've looked at, and there's a similar one in the data book. And I encourage everyone to go to the strategic planning data book and look at the slide called U M S appropriations. And what that slide shows is that since two thousand eight, we've lost forty-one point three million dollars in purchasing power from state appropriations that have not kept up with C P I, with inflation.
Yep.
So if we, if we look at this in, in the, if that were done in real dollars, it wouldn't be flat. It would be declining. And I think that's a really important point because that's a loss of purchasing power by the University of Maine system. And when we add in tuition freezes over that same period of time, that's a, a loss of, of purchasing power on that part of our revenue stream. So that if, and if you look at, and I think that's reflected in the slide, that's a few slides ahead, that shows the percent of, percent of per capita income, tuition as a percent of that. There's a, there's a meaningful price production effectively that those tuition, the rates of tuition have resulted in over the last ten years, which is a real benefit to families in the state of Maine. But it comes at a, a serious, all of this together comes at a serious cost in terms of revenue available to operate the system. And, and the last piece of this I'll mention is that within all of that revenue, when we start looking about how we've, we've actually spent the money. You mentioned that compensation has eaten, it, it showed, there you go, the lower left-hand corner is exactly the right slide. Yeah, that was sixty-seven percent, maybe ten years ago. That's about the time Sam Collins was probably hardly getting to harp on that number. It's now seventy-two percent, which means that non-compensation has dropped by a commensurate percentage. And so not only have we lost purchasing power with, with regard to non-compensation, but we've actually shrunk the shrinking, the smaller pie for that purpose, which I think helps explain just what the, how serious the kind of fiscal prospects are for the system going forward. When we, we know we face declining enrollment challenges that are not, not a lot we can do about. We can be as competitive as possible, but we're fighting with everybody else in the marketplace for a shrinking pool of students. And, and this, I just want to emphasize this, going back to Chair Gardner's comments earlier, that this fiscal reality is what has driven my concerns about the system for, for many years. And I, I think the board is just going to have to be laser-focused on how we're going to pay for what we are trying to do. We're, we're going to have to prioritize, which is why we're going through the strategic planning exercise. We just can't operate the way we've been operating. It isn't even remotely possible. If you look at the, the real impact of, of the fiscal circumstances that we're in. And I, I wish the news were better, and that doesn't mean that there aren't tremendous opportunities because there are. But, but those opportunities have to emerge from what is otherwise very challenging next few years of the system. And I, I also, this is my last meeting, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done over the years to try to manage all of this. Been a very complicated and challenging situation. And I'm, I'm going to support this budget, but I, I have to say, boy, this is, this hard work is really just beginning.
You, you really put your finger on the, on the challenge that we have, and it's right here in two pie charts. And so to your point, you're exactly right. If you, if, if, if you go back to the May F F T materials, you can see the chart that, that, trustee Erwin was talking about. But this is, this part has been relatively flat for, you know, for most recent years. We're, I mean, for the last ten years or so, we're certainly excited about the recent increases, but they're really just kind of keeping pace. And then if you're over here and we freeze tuition, this is the tuition and fee revenue. We freeze tuition roughly every other year, and we do that on a student base that is declining. That means that this piece of the pie is getting smaller in dollars every year. This piece, we're barely keeping up. In fact, we're not, depending how far you go back with buying power. So our, our revenue piece is, is stagnant at best. And then our expense side, you know, seventy-two percent as a system. And I'll note, you know, this is, this number is actually dragged down, if you will, by the University of Maine, which, you know, has a larger operation, not as, you know, I think they're in the mid-sixties, for instance, and in, in compensation as part of their E and G budget, which means that all the other campuses, and I think, I think Farmington is the one that sticks in my head, you know, are, are as much as eighty, eighty-five percent compensation. And so if your, if your revenue base that's coming in up here is flat or declining, and then down here, you know, we have, we have an across-the-board increase, we have increasing healthcare costs, other, other, other benefits increases, you are constantly in a cutting mode. And, and you know, that's, I feel like that's what I've been doing my whole life, but that's not fun.
Yeah, okay.
Just one quick follow-up. And, and when I'm, when I'm talking about how we've, we've allocated more and more to compensation relative to the whole pie, that is in no way suggested that, suggestion that we shouldn't have done that.
Yeah.
We have to pay our people.
Right.
And we have, we have collective bargaining for that. We have, and for, for unrepresented workers. You know, we keep them kind of on par with how collective bargaining goes. That's all necessary to do. So this is not saying we shouldn't be keeping people at least up with the cost of living. We'd like to do better than that. But this is, this is what the result of all of that has been over the last ten years. And I, I just think that picture is really important. So thank you.
Well said.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Erwin. I think vice chair Riley, soon to be chair, has a comment.
I just want to bookend this. And first, thank, from F F T's perspective, this has been incredible work pulling this together. And people worked hard and Ryan and his team have been phenomenal. I think Jim's point is well-taken about state appropriations and tuition. But we have to, it, we have to be careful not to leap to the conclusion that all we need to do is convince the legislature to give more money or raise tuition. Offsetting those questions, how much can the state really afford? A, and B, how much can we raise tuition and still be competitive in a very changing environment? Not suggesting that we don't do those things, but I think it just, we really have to drive home. Eighteen point eight million dollars is reserves that are no longer. When we look at next year, and I'm thinking primarily about the discussion we had from the public comment this morning. And people were, were surprised by some of the cuts that the University of Maine at Farmington made. This is our future, is to think differently about how we do business. The strategic plan that Jim mentioned, I think, becomes critically important. And we need to engage all of our community to think through that strategic planning program, to think of new ways of doing business so that quality, affordability and accessibility remain our goal. And we're not constantly sort of figuring out how to tweak, hopeful more federal money, hopeful more state money, and really have a, a system that's more sustainable. So for twenty, the work before us for twenty-four is not a pretty picture, and it's going to take everybody together to figure it out.
Vice Chair Riley, let me, let me just say, I, I agree with you and I, I am not suggesting, and I have never suggested that we go running to the legislature and cry about how you're not funding us. You know, you know, we go through a process with them. Our job as a board is to present the legislature with a, with a picture of the future that fits into the state's overall budget.
Exactly.
And that's what this future planning exercise is all about. We're, we're just at a very difficult point. But I agree with you, the path forward is not just to say, well, let's just raise prices and seek more money.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from trustees?
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And Ryan, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Ryan, thank you so much for this, and I appreciate your comment toward the beginning of your presentation about how hard it is. And I think the conversation that's been going on the last few minutes amongst the trustees is proof of that. I think the comment I want to make is that, one of the things I appreciate most about your approach, Ryan, and I think the approach the F F T committee has been working to take is to remember that we can look at these budgets in the aggregate and in the large percentage numbers or in the trend line. But the reality is that every single line in this budget represents either opportunity or limitation when it comes to real humans, right? Our students, our faculty, our staff. We know we have academic programs across this state that are fighting for scraps, right? As we are talking about these big numbers. And I think as we move forward and we think about the challenges we face, which you've outlined so well, I think to me, that is where, in addition to presenting the future and having that forward vision with an inclusive conversation along the way, is remembering that, that, that the big numbers are really made up of real people. And again, real opportunities or limitations on those opportunities that are presented by how we set our priorities in, in the budget. And I think particularly for us trustees, through compensation, through investment in infrastructure, we're trying to show that our priorities are in the right place. And so I want to say thank you, Ryan, to, to you, again, for working through another hard budget with all of us and just center us back in the fact that, that nothing about this is, is abstract. Every, every line has a, has a real face literally attached to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Roger Kate's here again. Thank you. And Ryan, thank you for that presentation. I think particularly the last twenty minutes or so has been a, a great discussion of thirty thousand feet of where we stand and the, the problems we're going, we've got going forward. I, I, I thought it might be helpful if you could just tell us, in a situation like Farmington, where because of declining enrollment, declining income, cuts have to be made. How that happens within the system and, and how that decision gets made about what cuts are going to have to happen? Could, could you summarize that for us?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, if I go back to, if I go back to the budget calendar at the beginning of my presentation, it really just kind of lays out the schedule. Just get my way back here. So, you know, again, we went through this, forgot my yellow pieces. So we go through this phase here again. So this is, this is those big budget levers. And so the biggest ones are, are compensation. We've talked about that, and there's state appropriation. How much do we think we're going to get from the state? And how much of that is going to work its way to Farmington? And, and, and the case of, in, in the case of the question here. And so we, we give those initial assumptions over to the campus, and the campus starts its, its budget work as you would expect. And not too long into this process, you start to get into a deficit situation. I think every campus generally does that. It's no different in my experience in state government. When you start out the process, you're always, almost always starting from a hole, and you kind of try to dig your way out of that. And so while, while Farmington, in the case of your question, every campus was doing this at the same time, was, was going through that exercising, exercise and ultimately arriving at a deficit. At the same time, we were having conversations with, with Tracy Elliott and others about what was happening with our investment returns? What was happening with the requests that we had from campus budget stabilization funds? And it was really clear when we were in this window that we were not going to have enough money to fund all of the budget stabilization fund requests that came in. As I mentioned, they were, they were, they, they were in the $12 million range. And if we wanted to leave a balance in there of 10, which was kind of what our goal was, we knew that we could only fund about 56% of those requests. And so, so in the case of Farmington, and give me plus or minus a little bit on the numbers since I'm, I'm doing this on the fly, you know, they had, they were requesting budget stabilization funds somewhere in the $3 million range. It was clear that we did not have that. And so we were only able to fund the requests that we got from Farmington, the requests that we got from Presque Isle, and, and what's the one I'm missing? And, and the law school. So we were only able to fund most of those requests at about 56%. And so that created a gap. There's a gap between the $3 million plus that Farmington asked for and the 1.8 million that we had available in funds. We went back to those campuses, we went back to Presque Isle as well. We went back to Fort Kent and said, I know you requested this, but here's what we have available. That created a gap. And then the campuses were essentially charged with closing that gap. Some campuses had other options that they could go to, other available resources, other cuts that they could make. The options that Farmington had were limited, and that's the, that's the plan that ended up in front of you.
Chancellor.
To answer that in a little bit further detail, those decisions were made at the campus level. So I want to point that out. I, I, I want to thank Ryan and his team for the development of this budget over the last 12 months or 10 months. It's extraordinary work in very rapidly changing times. And even since we had a vote at F F T, things have gone in the wrong direction even further sans today, but, but have the same fears that Ryan does. It's not as if any of this information that's available to you today is not available all the time. It's published, it's on our site. Ratios are published on our site. We have taken to the extent of, of writing a yearly report that compares all kinds of data to, to demonstrate where the system is as a whole. That's, so that's a thank you to Ryan. Let me say, however, that consistent with what our founding principles were with respect to unified accreditation, this budget guarantees that each university remains its own unit with a president, where there's a president and a president provost, where there's a president provost and a provost, where there's been provost previously. The work that Ryan and I and others have been engaged in go to that very mission. And having said that, we need to give warnings with respect to economic developments in, in the greater economy. Whether they are appreciated or not, they are given, and it is a matter of public record.
Any other trustee issue?
One more question. Looking at the compensation overall at 72%, you mentioned Farmington was what, 85%? Is there any flexibility between the different campuses on that compensation piece? Or is that all driven by just the contract? Or is there flexibility within each campus?
I mean, there's flexibility in, in, in whether you hire at different levels, but you know, the contract is the contract, and it's system-wide, and it applies equally to, to campuses.
Okay. All right, we're at a point, I think, where we can take the motion for this budget. I'm going to read the text of it and look for, or move on it. But the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the Finance, Facilities, and Technology Committee and approves the FY 2023 updated proposed University and System Office Operating and Capital Budget, recommended student charges, and proposed transfers from institutional reserves, including the Budget Stabilizations Fund.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Riley, and I think I saw trustee Martin second it. Ellen, could you take a vote from roll call vote on the votes online?
Trustee Kane? Yes.
Trustee Cates?
Yes.
Trustee Donnelly?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor here and present, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, for a very good job. Thank you, Chancellor, for your comments. Looking at the schedule, we're going to do the following. I believe our, our person is here to, to give us a faculty spotlight. And we're going to do that for the next roughly 30 minutes, plus or minus. And then we'll take our lunch break at that time. The lunch break, I'll determine how long this one goes, how long a lunch break will be. And then we'll come back and we'll pick up with, with tab seven, which will be the, the strategic report. Okay, thank you.
Well, as you know, we like to take the opportunity at the board meetings to hear from faculty at the campus about their work and what they're doing with their students and their courses and experiential opportunities. So today, we're going to hear from Dr. Nicholas Dossman. Is it correct, Dossman? Dr. Dossman is an associate professor of music and choral conducting, and he's the director of the Choral Studies here at the University of Southern Maine. In addition to his academic responsibilities, he is president of the Maine ACDA, which is the American Choral Directors Association. He's also the Eastern Division I C E P representative to that group, and he's Maine's representative to the National Collegiate Choral Organization. So before we hear from Dr. Dossman, I'm going to turn the podium over to President Cummings for some remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey. Just wanted to take a moment to say that in the first 48 hours that I became president seven years ago, I began to get a series of calls from the community. And we had no money. And they said, you have to invest in your music program. It is one of the best small music programs in the country. And I said, I will keep that in mind. And we found the money to do that. And we also found the ability to continue to attract great student talent and superb faculty talent. Nicholas Dossman is at the summit of that faculty music, musical talent. He has an undergraduate degree from Oberlin, is well-known nationally, internationally for its music. He has a doctorate from Columbia, and happily, we stole him from Colby College. And I have to say that he has been a tremendous, powerful example of excellence at USM, which is very important to a university. We have to take those particular programs that stand out. You have to put that out there, because as I've often said, people don't eat at a restaurant because it's cheap. You also have to be good, right? And so our, our music program and several other, others of our nationally recognized programs have been able to do that. I'll also tell you that he has attracted and be able, and asked to perform with his choral singers across the world, in Asia, where they won a major competition in Vietnam, in Europe, and throughout the United States. And I'll finish by telling you that I, I don't appreciate classical music the way my wife does. But when we were in the cathedral, the first time we heard him at about Christmas time, and he surrounded the entire cathedral here on the hill with his musicians, there was not a dry eye in the house. It was spectacular. So when you get to hear from Dr. Dossman today, it is a special gift. It's my honor, truly, to have worked with him. It's my honor to introduce him. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees. And thank you so much to, for having me here today. I'd also like to extend a special thank you to President Cummings, because with his leadership, the School of Music has been able to thrive, and the choral program has felt very supported. And we will all miss him dearly, and I wish him well in his future endeavors. As President Cummings said, I am the director of Choral Studies at the University of Southern Maine School of, the Osher School of Music. And we do appreciate the investment that we are making to build our School of Music further and have us on the Portland campus. I think that is a wonderful investment and well worth it. Throughout my career, I've come to many different venues. I started my career in Miami, Florida, at a Title I school, teaching middle school. And we had lack of funds. And we were able to make a program work and thrive. And started Miami for 10 years in the public schools before I arrived here. And after being at Colby and coming to USM, USM definitely feels more at home to me in terms of what the resources we have and how we're able to take whatever little resources we have and make the most of it. And the students here, when I first came to interview, they are what attracted me to this school. I was pleasantly surprised at the level of musicianship, talent, and ability. And those of you who know about the college search, for those of us who are in the creative arts, it's sort of an audition. We interview, but we also conduct and perform as a part of our process. After being at several different institutions around the country, after, during my interview process, the students that I was the most impressed with and the most surprised by were the students at the University of Southern Maine. And I think the one thing that I will say is, we, in the past few years, have been bringing that talent out to the forefront, and I think that is a path that we need to continue. So rather than tell you about what we do and what we've done over the past few years and how we've engaged with the community, we're going to show you a video clip in just a moment. And this is a performance that we had a few years ago at Merrill Auditorium. And we had engaged with the community course at South Berwick, another course that I conduct, and invited several high schools, about nine different high schools from the state of Maine to join us. And we invited a conductor, Dr. Candace Wiki from the Continual Arts Foundation, who was the conductor who premiered this work, to speak about this performance and the journey of this performance. And we did the first U S premiere of Stephen Edwards' Requiem for My Mother. Now, he's an award-winning composer, a Hollywood composer. And this work brought about 300, 300 individuals together. Where our students were engaged, our youngest performer was eight years old, and our oldest performer was 80 years old. So several generations were represented in this magnificent work. So I'd like you to just have a chance to hear what it is that we've done. So I'd like you to just have a chance to hear what it is that we've done. of what the creative activity is. Because you could have done a PowerPoint, but it's, to me, it's very important that you see what it is that we do as artists and scholars. Now, I have published in peer-reviewed journals, and I am under contract with Roman and Littlefield to publish a book on choral pedagogy. So there's also the scholar creative side. I've been currently engaged in more creative activity right now at USM. As I said earlier, my biggest mission and goal is to bring this kind of talent to the forefront of the eastern region, northeast region of the United States, the east coast, nationally and internationally. And in 2017, we gave our first performance. I think the last time we performed, that the, it was known as the Music Educators National Conference, which later evolved to the National Association for Music Education. The last time that an ensemble from USM had performed at that was back when it was the Gorham Normal School. And so in 2017, we performed at that conference, where people from as far south as, I think, Maryland, all the way up to New England, had a chance to see and hear our students. I brought programs of that performance because it wasn't just about our performance. It was, I presented at that conference, and so did a colleague of mine, Dr. Michelle Kishub, to have USM fully engaged and present. Because I do believe that one of the areas that we can improve upon and that we've been working on is making sure that people know what we have here at USM, so that we can attract students and attract a diverse group of students. And while we were at that conference, I took our students on a little adventure to the Bronx, New York. And we went to the Fordham School of the Arts, and we did a joint workshop with them. And we found that our students at USM had a lot in common. Now, they were obviously very, very ethnically and racially different, but as far as their socioeconomics and ability to relate to one another was quite the experience. And so that we, that was in 2017. Following that, we, I put a proposal together to present at a National American Choral Directors Association Conference in Minneapolis. And to be able to present at a conference for the national organization is a highly selective, peer-reviewed process. I was selected, and I presented on the topic of recruiting males in choral ensembles. And as we know, those of you who've watched choral ensembles, there's kind of one-third of the group are males, and two-thirds are biologically female. Now, that is changing in the 21st century, as we are now dealing with gender diversity and inclusion of different kinds of individuals on the gender spectrum. And so we've adjusted. But at this conference, engaging students and having our students a part of, be a part of it was important to me. And four of our students represented the entire state of Maine at this conference as part of a national collegiate ensemble. We were the only institution from Maine that had students in that ensemble. And it was represented with all 50 states. And they performed with a nationally renowned conductor at this conference while I was presenting. So they had a chance to build their network and to further engage in their career opportunities and meet people in the field at this national conference. Then there was Vietnam. Vietnam was the first time that any group, musical groups speaking, had been to Asia. I thought it was very important for us to engage in tours. My predecessor, so wonderful predecessor, he brought many groups to Europe over the years, and they did performance tours. Again, for me, what was important is getting as much attention for our ensembles and the School of Music as we could possibly generate. So participating in a competition, although I don't believe music is a competitive sport, nor it should be, because it's art and making beauty and bringing that into the world, I do know how people pay attention to competitions and to events like that. If we think about sports and how many people go to a football game and how the Super Bowl fills a stadium, we do know that those, those kinds of events do generate a lot of attention. And we, as a result of us going to Vietnam, we did get a lot of media attention. We were featured on New Center Six. They did a nice little piece on our tour, and they came out to our campus. And then they followed up with, when we came back as receiving gold diplomas. And we were invited to the grand prize finale, where there were, out of 30, they chose six choirs to perform. And those choirs were from all over the world. And USM, it's a huge honor for us, being probably one of the smallest places and least known places to be, have been invited to the grand prize finale. A little anecdote about that. A colleague of mine, who just happened to be roaming around Vietnam at that time, came and found our students and found me. And I said, what are you doing here? He said, I just happened to be here because I wanted to check this out. And I happened to be in Asia, and I noticed this was happening. And he, and he congratulated us and told us how proud he was and how well we represented not only Maine and our institution, but our country. I'll also add that we performed at the opening ceremonies of this festival on Vietnamese television. So we've gotten a lot of attention. And at the end of that competition, we were invited to do a larger competition called the World Choir Games of Champions, where they invite the very best choirs. And we are listed on Intercolts' website as one of the best choirs right now in the world. They list about, they list 1,000 choirs. Thousand sounds like a lot, but if you think about how many choirs are in the world, being in the top 1,000 is a pretty elite honor. So from Vietnam, I decided that our students need to still be seen locally. And one of the best ways for them to be seen locally and for the school to garner even more recognition is to perform at American Choral Directors Association Conference. Now, to have a chorus invited to that is extremely difficult. And it's extremely selective. The process includes sending a blind review recording for three years of your chorus. No identifying information about who we are, where we are, who I am, is to be included because it's a blind review process. And choral scholars from around the country, outside of the eastern region, because we want to keep it as anonymous as possible, go, they send it all the way to California, Midwest, to evaluate and decide which choirs are going to be invited to perform. Now, USM has never been invited to perform and never made the cut. The last group from Maine that ever performed at an ACDA conference was in the 1980s. It was the last time a group from Maine had ever been invited, and I believe that was UMaine Orinol. I sent that recording, and we did get an invitation to perform this year, 2022, at the ACDA Eastern Region Conference in Boston. What better way to show the region and specialists in the area the kind of quality that we have? We were the only small state regional university on that. Some of the other schools that were performing were University of Maryland, Fredonia State University, Berkeley Conservatory. These were all major players, and we were the only little guy performing there. And our program consisted exclusively of compositions by people of color and women and music of our time, which was very important to me because it's important that we show the world that others have talent. Rather, I mean, we love Bach and Beethoven and Mozart. As you know, I went through a conservatory education, and I really respect those composers. But I think it's important for the world to know that there are others, and representation matters. Additionally, I chose a student composition, Katie Lind, who just graduated and with a degree in music education and composition. And I chose one of her pieces to feature in this performance. And so a group of choral scholars and people who are interested in music and focused on music heard this brand-new composition, Summer Rain, premiere. A very well-known composer by the name of Nick Page in the Boston area came up and congratulated her. And she had a, she had publishers wanting to publish her composition. So these are ways that we are showing student success and giving students the opportunity to thrive on very large stages. As a result of that performance, two weeks later, I received an invitation. And it was an invitation for the USM Chamber Singers to perform at Lincoln Center in 2023 and give a concert in Lincoln Center. So our students are thriving, and I will say thriving under the most challenging of circumstances. Imagine having to sing with masks. Imagine having to perform at this kind of level with these kinds of challenges. And our students have really thrived despite the challenges. Additionally, we've led, the University of Southern Maine has led in terms of bringing music back to the schools. We were featured on, a few years ago, when COVID happened and we reopened the schools, we were featured on New Center Six with our group singing. I think Chancellor Malloy was there. We were singing outdoors. And I was meeting regularly with members of the medical community in the CDC, superintendents, educators, to figure out, how can we bring music back to schools? Because during that time, singing was considered one of the most dangerous things you could do because of all the aerosols that were produced. And we got to a point where I said, okay, we can do it. I, I've been studying, although I have a doctoral degree and have that title doctor, I know I'm not a medical doctor. So I said, what, what does the medicine say that we can do? And we followed very closely. We did, sang outdoors with masks six feet apart. We had a concert. Normally, our concerts would happen at the end of the semester. We had our concert in October outdoors, because if you know anything about Maine, if you try to have a concert outdoors in December, it's going to be painful for everyone, especially me. I'm very cold-averse. So we made sure to have that concert happen. And we showed it to people in the state. And superintendents, one particularly, can't remember her name, she, she started to believe. And it only takes one to believe and to motivate others. And as we know, music is back in our schools. We just had an all-state conference, and that's starting to happen again. And USM was one of the leaders in showing that it can be done safely. Finally, I'd like to wrap up where we are currently. In a few weeks, and I do mean in a very few weeks, June 11th, the University of Southern Maine Singers, as well as community partners, Community Course at South Berwick, Portland Symphony Orchestra's Magic of Christmas Chorus, and others, will be making our Carnegie Hall debut. Where it's, we've never performed in that space, and I will be conducting the ensembles and orchestra. And we will be doing a performance of opera choruses. I had the artistic leadership of this particular part of the programming. And one of the things I insisted on is, though we know opera, and many of you may or may not be opera fans, I insisted that we have diverse voices represented and diverse stories told. So I love Wagner, I love Rossini, I love Bellini and Mozart and all of the classics. However, many people don't know, Scott Joplin wrote an opera called Tremaine. We're opening up this concert with orchestra with Scott Joplin's Real Slow Drive from Tremaine. And the first thing that the audience will hear is marching onward. I did that purposely because I do think it's time for us to march onward and to be more inclusive. And through the arts, we can show that we can be inclusive. We also have world-renowned soloist Alison Cambridge, who was a classmate of mine back in Oberlin. She will be one of our soloists. Sidney Outlaw, sang at the Met. And David Margulis. All three opera stars and opera luminaries that will be our featured soloists in Carnegie. I've mentioned them because they're not only going to be our featured soloists, but our students audition to be masterclass participants with them. And I'm happy to report that nine of our students will have a chance to work with these stars. And they will have a chance to network with these people who can help their careers in the future. And they'll spend time with them. And it was a very selective audition process. So our students, in addition to just having the honor of being on Carnegie stage, several of our outstanding soloists will be coached and have private sessions with these opera luminaries and have a chance to professionally network. And so I think, I think that USM is starting, especially the School of Music, and I know that once our new building is, is constructed, we'll be able to really attract even more students and really, really become a major player in the region. And I would argue, in the next 10 years, be a national player and be a place that we'll, we'll see probably a very different student body at USM in the future. So I'd like to thank you again for having me today and hearing about the progress of the School of Music. And I thank you for your support.
Thank you for very enlightening and very interesting and discussion. And the lessons of music was terrific. Thank you. You've, you've done a lot with the School of Music, and it's great to know that it's doing so well. And, and it's a real, it's a real trademark for USM, but also for the state of Maine. And thank you for all you do. I don't know if any trustees have any questions or comments.
I don't think you should say.
Mr. Chair, I do.
Yes, go right ahead, Emily.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I, I was, I have a degree in vocal music, choral music education from the University of Maine. And the opportunities you are creating for the students, for Carnegie Hall, for the regional conferences, for ACDA, that is a really big deal. I had the privilege of doing nearly all those things as an undergrad at UMaine. And I'm just so excited that more Maine students are going to be on that national, international stage. And just want to say, I wish you well at Carnegie Hall. It's a magical place, and I love the musical selections you've picked. And I wish I'd been there today in person, so I could have, I don't know, talked with you afterwards. Because it was very exciting. And the music, the music, music nerd in me, which I am forever, is just very grateful for your innovation and your commitment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, thanks very much. We're going to move into our lunch at this point. And I'm looking at my watch, it's almost noon time. I'm going to take, we'll take one half hour for lunch. I would ask that the, if you wouldn't mind, let the trustees get their lunch first because we will start up sharply at 12:30, and we need to have them all back, ready to go. And Ellen, where do they go for that? Around the corner, she says. Okay, so, and we'll start up after lunch with the strategic discussions. Okay, thank you.
We're going to resume. I want to thank USM and the folks for their very nice lunch. It was very, very good. And thank you for doing that. We have a very full afternoon and some extremely important topics that are coming up. The first one is going to be on strategic planning, which I talked about and others had talked about this morning. The strategic planning effort is, is very, very important. The result of that effort will ultimately be a roadmap for the system and all the different campuses as we go through the next five years to 10 years. So to kick that off, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chancellor Thielen, who will introduce the people who are going to be speaking.
Please, and system and university leaders and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce this topic. I'll offer only a few words here of introduction for our Huron partners who are helping to lead this work with us and helping us write our own strategic plan for what we see as the vision of public higher education in Maine in the coming years. We've obviously spent a lot of time, important time, hearing about the challenges and the difficulties that we've encountered this morning through the meeting. It's time now to hear about the aspirations we have based upon what all of our university colleagues around the state have been telling our Huron partners over the last couple of months with the work that they've done. Just as a quick refresher and a reminder for the board of the chronology of this work, the board last summer charged the chancellor with developing the system's first strategic plan in a traditional sense since 2004. There have been obviously a number of strategic declarations, goal-setting documents and targets over that time, but not a real strategic planning effort where we dig deep into our universities to gather input, to find out what's going well, to find out what we can do better, and to use all of that information to inform our thinking about what our vision should be going forward. Now, obviously, we heard about the financial challenges that are in front of us. No strategic plan has a tenant that says, "We're going to cut our budget." No strategic plan also says, "We're going to be accredited." And yet, those factors, how we've accredited ourselves now as a unified institution at the system level, how we handle our budget challenges, very much inform the work that we're going to be doing with Huron over the next year to develop this plan together. And we've heard some of this reflected in the themes and input that the Huron team has gathered in traveling around the state, visiting all of our universities with the chancellor over the last two months. So in terms of what the presentation will be today, we'll hear some thematic ideas that are coming out of that input gathering. We're also going to connect the work to the Unified Accreditation Self-Study process that is nearing its completion, which Associate Vice Chancellor Jeff St. John will talk about following the Huron presentation. It's important that we link those two initiatives together. We need to understand what we're saying in our self-study to Netchy, our institutional accreditor. We need to understand how the opportunities that we identify in working together more closely as a unified accredited institution can inform that vision for what we think higher ed can be in Maine, given our challenges, given the opportunities of working together better in our family of universities. So with that, I'd like to invite Peter Stokes to the podium. He's leading the Huron team effort, and he will begin the presentation that Huron has. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you very much, Vice Chancellor, and good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, trustees. It's a pleasure to be with you here today. And I just want to say that the presentation with regard to the Choral work was really beautiful. It was a wonderful thing to see just before lunch. I do want to say a few words just about how we approach strategic planning. And there are a couple important phases to the effort overall. First, it involves reflection. We have to think about the current state of the system. We have to think about the recent history and also the deep history. And then we have to engage in a process of ideation, of creative thought about what this system of universities can do going forward. Once we've done some of that ideation, we also have to start thinking about how do we test some of the emerging and promising hypotheses that arise through this process? And that testing piece is really critical. And then from there, we start thinking about prioritization. How do we decide which ideas, which initiatives are going to be most important for us to pursue so that we can provide the necessary resources, time, money, talent to pursue them? And out of that, we start to develop a framework for what we think the foundational elements of the plan are going to be. Now, throughout that entire process, it's absolutely vital that there be engagement, engagement across the system. And so, you know, I think we've heard throughout the day, today, the importance of engagement, and that's certainly, absolutely built in to how we think about what we're trying to do here. So I want to start just with a brief few comments on the overall timeline. As the Vice Chancellor just mentioned, we are about five months in on an 18-month process, so we are still relatively early in this process. And we see really two kinds of approaches as being important to planning. One of those is about present-forward planning, right? So there are things that we know about each of the universities, the School of Law, the State of Maine, et cetera, et cetera. There are things that we know about the present. And, and we've got relevant data. We've got the data book that has been referenced. On the basis of some of that information, we can be relatively confident in our predictions, as we saw with the budget presentation, of what 2023 might look like, 2024, and so on. The other piece of it, though, is thinking longer term. And there, we don't have data. We aren't able to extend the present knowledge that we have infinitely into the future, whether it's five years or 10 years. So when we start thinking about the longer-term future, we have to start making some assumptions. We have to start doing some scenario planning. And we have to think creatively about what the trends of the present suggest about the future state. So there's, there's that present-forward planning that we can do based on what we know today. But then, when we think about the future, we have to do a kind of a future-back planning. And so there are really two different time horizons that we're thinking about as we engage in this effort. So to date, over the prior five months or so, much of our work is really focused on understanding the current state and has been informed by that present-forward planning approach. And so that has involved quantitative data, so looking at things like enrollment across the system, student success, also looking at the broader environment and thinking about labor market demand, competition. All of these are elements of the data book that has been referenced and which you can find on the strategic planning website. At the same time, we've also begun the engagement process and have been developing a qualitative data set to accompany that other data set. And so that means we've been engaging in interviews, in focus groups, with university leadership, with various members of the community, including faculty, staff, and students, along with all of that, of course, being in partnership with the board, the Board at Heart Committee, and the working group. So we are now moving into a phase where we're beginning to undertake scenario planning in more of that future-back mode that I described a moment ago. And so we're trying to imagine what future labor markets in the state might look like, what the economic needs are of the state, and what the educational needs are of the state, and how do we best leverage the assets of this system?
We're going to resume. Want to thank USM and folks for their very nice lunch. It was very, very good, and thank you for doing that. We have a very full afternoon and some extremely important topics that are coming up. The first one is going to be on strategic planning, which I talked about and others had talked about this morning. The strategic planning effort is, is very, very important. The result of that effort will ultimately be a roadmap for the system and all the different campuses as we go through the next five years to 10 years. So to kick that off, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chancellor Thielen, who will introduce the people who are going to be speaking.
Please, and system and university leaders and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce this topic. I'll offer only a few words here of introduction for our Huron partners, who are helping to lead this work with us and helping us write our own strategic plan for what we see as the vision of public higher education in Maine in the coming years. We've obviously spent a lot of time, important time, hearing about the challenges and the difficulties that we've encountered this morning through the meeting. It's time now to hear about the aspirations we have based upon what all of our university colleagues around the state have been telling our Huron partners over the last couple of months with the work that they've done. Just as a quick refresher and a reminder for the board of the chronology of this work, the board last summer charged the chancellor with developing the system's first strategic plan in a traditional sense since 2004. There have been obviously a number of strategic declarations, goal-setting documents and targets over that time, but not a real strategic planning effort where we dig deep into our universities to gather input, to find out what's going well, to find out what we can do better, and to use all of that information to inform our thinking about what our vision should be going forward. Now, obviously, we heard about the financial challenges that are in front of us. No strategic plan has a tenant that says, "We're going to cut our budget." No strategic plan also says, "We're going to be accredited." And yet, those factors, how we've accredited ourselves now as a unified institution at the system level, how we handle our budget challenges, very much inform the work that we're going to be doing with Huron over the next year to develop this plan together. And we've heard some of this reflected in the themes and input that the Huron team has gathered in traveling around the state, visiting all of our universities with the chancellor over the last two months. So in terms of what the presentation will be today, we'll hear some thematic ideas that are coming out of that input gathering. We're also going to connect the work to the Unified Accreditation Self-Study Process that is nearing its completion, which Associate Vice Chancellor Jeff St. John will talk about following the Huron presentation. It's important that we link those two initiatives together. We need to understand what we're saying in our self-study to Netchy, our institutional accreditor. We need to understand how the opportunities that we identify in working together more closely as a unified accredited institution can inform that vision for what we think higher ed can be in Maine, given our challenges, given the opportunities of working together better in our family of universities. So with that, I'd like to invite Peter Stokes to the podium. He's leading the Huron team effort, and he will begin the presentation that Huron has. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you very much, Vice Chancellor, and good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, trustees. It's a pleasure to be with you here today. And I just want to say that the, the presentation with regard to the choral work was really beautiful. It was a wonderful thing to see just before lunch. I do want to say a few words just about how we approach strategic planning, and there are a couple important phases to the effort overall. First, it involves reflection. We have to think about the current state of the system. We have to think about the recent history and, and also the deep history. And then we have to engage in a process of ideation, of creative thought about what this system of universities can do going forward. Once we've done some of that ideation, we also have to start thinking about how do we test some of the emerging and promising hypotheses that arise through this process. And that testing piece is really critical. And then from there, we start thinking about prioritization. How do we decide which ideas, which initiatives are going to be most important for us to pursue so that we can provide the necessary resources, time, money, talent, to pursue them? And out of that, we start to develop a framework for what we think the foundational elements of the plan are going to be. Now, throughout that entire process, it's absolutely vital that there be engagement, engagement across the system. And so, you know, I think we've heard throughout the day, today, the importance of engagement, and that's certainly absolutely built in to how we think about what we're trying to do here. So I want to start just with a brief few comments on the overall timeline. As the Vice Chancellor just mentioned, we are about five months in on an 18-month process, so we are still relatively early in this process. And we see really two kinds of approaches as being important to planning. One of those is about present-forward planning, right? So there are things that we know about each of the universities, the School of Law, the State of Maine, et cetera, et cetera. There are things that we know about the present. And, and we've got relevant data. We've got the data book that has been referenced. On the basis of some of that information, we can be relatively confident in our predictions, as we saw with the budget presentation, of what 2023 might look like, 2024, and so on. The other piece of it, though, is thinking longer term. And there, we don't have data. We aren't able to extend the present knowledge that we have infinitely into the future, whether it's five years or 10 years. So when we start thinking about the longer-term future, we have to start making some assumptions. We have to start doing some scenario planning. And we have to think creatively about what the trends of the present suggest about the future state. So there's, there's that present-forward planning that we can do based on what we know today. But then when we think about the future, we have to do a kind of a future-back planning. And so there are really two different time horizons that we're thinking about as we engage in this effort. So to date, over the prior five months or so, much of our work is really focused on understanding the current state and has been informed by that present-forward planning approach. And so that has involved quantitative data, so looking at things like enrollment across the system, student success, also looking at the broader environment and thinking about labor market demand, competition. All of these are elements of the data book that has been referenced and which you can find on the Strategic Planning website. At the same time, we've also begun the engagement process and have been developing a qualitative data set to accompany that, that other data set. And so that means we've been engaging in interviews, in focus groups with university leadership, with various members of the community, including faculty, staff, and students, along with all of that, of course, being in partnership with the Board, the Board at Heart Committee, and the Working Group. So we are now moving into a phase where we're beginning to undertake scenario planning in more of that future-back mode that I described a moment ago. And so we're trying to imagine what future labor markets in the state might look like, what the economic needs are of the state, and what the educational needs are of the state, and how do we best leverage the assets of this system, of this set of universities, in order to address those needs? That, of course, involves not just engagement with the system community, with all of the members of the universities, but also talking with external stakeholders. So some of the employers, who are significant players in the State of Maine, talking to government leaders and nonprofit organizations who also have a stake in the work that these universities engage in. So as we move into the fall and winter, these two streams, the present-forward and the future-back, will begin to converge, and they're going to give shape to what will then be the emerging plan, right? We'll move from that, that period of reflection and ideation into that period of, of testing hypotheses, and then a little bit later prioritization and the development of framework. And we want to do all of that in the context of the real-world challenges that the system is facing, as well as the real-world opportunities that it has before it. So that's a little bit about where we are relative to the overall timeline. Now, one of the other things that we've been doing as we've gone around from university to university, engaged with all of these stakeholders, is that we've noted themes and patterns that have been emerging in the course of our dialogue. And, and we've, you know, we've, we've engaged in dialogue that has been largely unprompted, asking relatively simple, open-ended questions. What do you think is great about your university today? What can it do more of in the future? And what are some of the challenges that we need to contend with as we go forward? So part of what I'll share with you in just a few moments is a summary of what we've heard as we've gone through that engagement. Now, again, this is a first step in a continuous and iterative and recursive process of dialogue. So I don't want you to mistake any of the emerging themes or the messages that we're going to be summarizing today with the plan itself. There's still a lot of ground to cover before we get there. But what we will hear, you know, I think, in, in this brief summary are some of the matters of concern that have resulted from the listening that we've been doing and the reflection that the system communities have been undertaking. So we've organized our listening and, and the pattern recognition into four key areas. And those include audiences, operations, the assets of the State of Maine, and then a fourth category that we call enablers. So in other words, the first three categories are really about opportunities for the system to, to pursue excellence, to pursue educational impact, research impact, economic development, et cetera. The enablers are the things that enable you to do that. And so those are some of the assets that you have. Those are tools. They could be things like your brand, your culture, your capabilities. That's ultimately what makes it possible for you to realize the aspirations that are important to the community. Underneath those four major categories, we also identified a total of 11 major subcategories. And, you know, as we, as we noted, where we saw, what you can see is we're noting where we see convergence or divergence across the system as a whole. So each of these issue areas is vertical, and then the universities are horizontal. And you start to see where certain issues are lining up, and, and certain issues are repeating areas of concern across the system. And so, for example, we see a uniform belief that Maine is an asset that could be better leveraged to promote the future direction and impact of the universities, right? Almost, or rather, everybody believes that that is something that is important and something to do. Likewise, we also see a relatively strong focus across almost all of the universities with respect to retention in other very significant issue. So these are likely to be issues that have to play some role in how we think about defining the aspirations for the system going forward. But we also saw some areas of divergence as well. So, for example, a focus on, on the adult market or research. These are, of course, pretty logical areas of divergence because different universities serve different audiences and undertake, you know, different kinds of activities, and so these are relatively sensible. But a mapping like this can help us begin to think about those opportunities that are shared across the system. And a big part of what we have to achieve here through this planning process is the identification of shared interest. Every individual has personal interest. Every organization has self-interest. But what we have to really be thinking about here in the context of this system-wide planning effort is, what are the shared interests of all of the members of this system community going forward? And so we also want to identify where we see opportunities for greater alignment and collaboration across the system as we look at maps like these as well. So having illustrated some of the priority concerns and some of the enablers, and I just want to say a little bit more about each of those in some detail. So as we went around, there were a number of important concerns, issues that mattered to, you know, virtually all of the folks that we spoke with. Among those were things like retention and completion. Those are key priorities. And so that clearly has, functions both as an educational objective, but it's also a financial objective. And people understand that. The degree to which they are, are ready to confront some of the financial challenges may vary a little bit from, from individual to individual, but folks do ultimately understand that we have to have the financial house in order, in order to best manage our educational activity. Diversity, equity, inclusion was another very, very, very common theme that we heard as we visited campuses. And that was particularly true among student groups. Students were very, very clear about how important diversity is to their own student experience, to the richness of that experience, and to, you know, the kind of community that they want to live in going forward. And the fact, of course, is that population of Maine is diversifying. And so there's an opportunity here and a requirement for the system to do, to do what it can to achieve the kinds of experiences that students, as well as faculty, staff, and leaders are seeking. Adult learners also represent a growth opportunity, and so whether that's alumni, whether that's community partners and employers, this is really something that is unfolding across all of higher education in the United States. There have been many institutions, like, say, Augusta, that have focused on non-traditional students for long histories. There are some universities that are entirely dedicated to that activity. But virtually every university in the United States right now is asking itself, in a context where demography, in the vast majority of the country, is going negative over the next five to 10 years, how do we find more students? And so as the high school graduating classes start to diminish, that's going to point more and more institutions to looking at the working adult, the non-traditional market. So this is something that, of course, is present and meaningful here in Maine as well. Research is, of course, another area of, of great interest. The system is building a really valuable asset in the University of Maine, and that can have impact through its collaborations with many of the universities in the system. There's also a recognition that the system has to play a role, an important role, a vital role, as an economic and cultural engine. And so, again, the, you know, the, the conversation that we had earlier about the music program and the choral work, that does represent why this is so important, as an educational opportunity, as a means of, of building the brand for the system regionally, nationally, internationally. That's fantastic work. And of course, it's an incredible experience for the students as well as for the faculty. But we also need to be thinking about employers. We do need to be thinking about how we extend impact into the community. And that's why external stakeholder engagement is just as important as internal stakeholder engagement as we go further into this process. And one of the other things that clearly stood out, as I mentioned a few moments ago, is the idea that Maine itself is an asset. And so that means its geography, which is diverse, its, its coastline, which is beautiful, its culture, its nature, its tourism, the community that is here. Not enough people know about it. That's the very strong feeling that many that we engaged with expressed. And so that represents an opportunity. Now, in addition to that, there are some pretty particular industries here that are also highly relevant to how we want to think about the future for the system. And so that means industries in biofuels, in green energy, in aquaculture, and, and also things like data analytics and artificial intelligence. So we want to be thinking about all of these things as assets in the State of Maine, and we want to be thinking about how the university system can leverage those assets to best realize its future opportunities. And then finally, just a few words on, on enablers, and then I'm going to invite my colleague Kathy Dove to come up and talk a little bit about alignment with Unified Accreditation. But on the enabler front, it's, it's really important that we put the system's collective assets to work benefiting all. Now, there's no question that in the course of all of today's discussion, that certain tensions were referenced in the course of the dialogue. And there is always in any system going to be some element of, of a perception, at least, of, of haves and have-nots. But this planning process can be one means of directly engaging with those concerns, with those tensions, with those worries. And what we want to use this process to drive toward is more of that sense of shared ownership, that everyone has a stake in the outcome of the system, and we have to think collectively and creatively and persistently over time about how we can best leverage our resources to benefit all. So that's a, that's a critical issue. We also know that there's a, a brand and value perception study going on with your, your partners in Vision Point. And so thinking about those local stories, as well as the macro story about the impact and value add of the system is also going to be critical to how you think about executing the strategic plan once completed. And it's also important to recognize and celebrate all of the win-win collaborations that are in fact already taking place and have been taking place for many years across the system. And one of the things that we've been engaged in through this process, working with the System Office and working with the leaders of individual universities, to start to build up a real catalog of all of those projects. Because we, we, we don't necessarily perceive that there is a widespread, shared understanding of all of the innovative activities that are taking place in one corner or another corner of the system. And so if we want to be thinking about how to take the system's best assets, academic assets, research assets, et cetera, et cetera, we need to understand where those best practices are. And we need to think about the role that, for example, the System Office could play as an aggregator and disseminator of those best practices so that they aren't solely impacting those corners of the system, but really better able to, to impact all of the corners of the system and the system as a whole. And so that starts to get also to the question of governance and the role of the System Office itself as an enabler of strategic thinking, of strategic planning, and then ultimately the execution of the strategic plan. So that's a little bit of a summary about where we've been, what we've been doing. Again, still relatively early days. The participation has been heartfelt, engaged, vocal, and largely very positive. And so it's been very accepting as we've gone, you know, to each university and met with folks, and that's been really wonderful. People have been waiting for this process. I think, as the Vice Chancellor mentioned, it's been quite a number of years since you did this with this depth. People are ready for it. I think we can harness that energy and do some really good things with it. So with that, I'm going to invite Kathy to come up and talk with you a little bit about Unified Accreditation.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Dove, and it's a pleasure to be here with you. Does anybody need to stretch? That lunch was terrific. I know I ate a lot. Thank you. I'm just going to talk very briefly on your bridge between strategic planning and Unified Accreditation. And both are, as you know, critically important processes. But I give you all so much credit for thinking really clearly and first and foremost about the alignment between the two of them because there's just so much to gain. It's kind of the one plus one equals three, the fact that these things are going on together. So the first comment I would make is that in a number of ways, Unified Accreditation can be thought of as an Uber enabler. Peter just talked about enablers. Unified Accreditation gives so much power, potentially, to this strategic planning process if we let it. And of course, I mean Uber, not in the rideshare way, but in the grandiose way. But there are two other forms of alignment that I think you're all aware of. One is alignment on process. So congratulations to all of you for really syncing these processes up in a very deliberate way. We are, we at Huron, in support of you all, are working very closely with Jeff and his team to make sure that we are aware of what each other are doing and that we can leverage the good work that's happening throughout the process, getting stakeholder engagement from a number of different aspects. So alignment on process and timing is critically helpful and important. The other piece of alignment, of course, is alignment on themes. And the good news is, even though we're fairly early in the strategic planning process, as Peter mentioned, we are seeing great alignment on themes. As we talk to community members and stakeholders, and we look at some of the quantitative and qualitative data, there is good alignment on these themes. So I thought I would just highlight a few of them for you. I'm not going to go through this entire list on just, and I know Jeff is, I believe, speaking next, and maybe he's going to talk a little bit more about this. Some of these should be pretty obvious to all. So the first one, retention, persistence, and completion. As Peter mentioned, that is coming up from almost every group and stakeholder we talk to. Your community is so focused on the good of the student and the University of Maine system. That came up from students, faculty, staff, and others. I went through the, the self-study report, which I think is excellent, by the way, again, last night, as a matter of fact. And it's throughout the self-study report, examples of the good work you're all doing, focusing on, on persistence and retention issues. It's also coming up in strategic planning. So these are going to inform each other. A lot of good opportunities already exist. We're hearing a lot of good examples of, of programs across campuses that we can use to improve retention, persistence, and completion. Second example that's already come up is the adult market. Again, great examples on individual campuses about what's happening. One that I had the opportunity to hear a lot about was on EMPY. The Your Pace program has tremendous potential to help adult learners, perhaps across the system and beyond. Unified Accreditation is going to facilitate all of that. The last example Joan, I know, spoke a little bit about is research and economic development. The good work that's happening at the University of Maine is repeated in a much smaller scale at some of the other universities. And they have expressed interest in collaborating and building off of those examples of success. So lots of opportunities here, as highlighted in the Unified Accreditation process, and will be likely incorporated in the strategic planning process. The good news, Peter mentioned this, is as we went, have talked to many people on the different, at the different universities, is there is a desire to move forward and to leverage Unified Accreditation in a way that helps shape the strategic plan. Thought I would conclude by highlighting a quote I saw in the self-study, which I thought was great. And what it said is, "Unified Accreditation has united UMS and its universities in a way that compels intentional strategic planning." I think that really captures the essence of what these two processes are doing. They're, they're in parallels in a lot of ways, but there are definitely important intersection points, and we are focused on making sure that those intersections happen in a very thoughtful and deliberate way. So I don't know if we have time for questions. Jim?
Yeah, we do. If there are any questions or comments from trustees or anyone?
And Peter may want to... Couldn't have been that clear.
Mark, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, trustee Kane.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation. I think, I think the only thing from the presentation that I would add, a couple of things that have shown up in our committee meeting. The first, I think, is that we are still in this process, that not, not, we are still very much in a process of engagement, and that's going to continue. And I know that was laid out, but I think where we, if we think about the theme of the day and the conversations we had earlier this morning about the importance of listening and engaging with the people on our campuses who have been there a long time and who care very much about them like we all do, I want to just stress that part from a process perspective that we, we're nowhere, we're nowhere near done. And that we have a lot of input we're going to need from all of the stakeholders in order to get this right and come up with that shared vision of what the future can be with, with the tools we have available to us. And, and to that end, I think I also want to clarify that while we are, we are talking about putting together that that vision, we do not, that nothing about this expects the campuses to all be the same. And I think that, I want to make sure that that's clear. We see that in the assets as we think about each campus and what each one brings to the table. We know research does happen on all the campuses in different forms. We know that different types of learning and different types of programs exist on campuses, and we're not trying to make them all the same. We're trying to maximize and leverage the opportunity to be the best it can be on each campus. And I want to make sure that that campus identity piece is not lost as we go forward. But I think I'm just also excited to be part of this process, and I think it's worth a shout out to Jim Irwin, who, as he is departing, has been pushing on this for a while, and we will take good care of it, Jim, I promise, even though you're leaving. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kane. Anyone else?
Let me just add, if I might, to that comment. Thank you so much for making those comments. We have heard some really exciting opportunities for collaboration among the universities. And to your point, this is just strengthening each of the universities as well as the system as a whole. It's a win-win if some of these collaborations are expanded.
Thank you. Just some people, some people probably wonder why the building's shaking right now. They're driving pylons. My guess is they're driving pylons in the parking lot.
We're not going to confirm that.
Having, I haven't been around a lot of things that this reminds me of, so yeah. But I'm sure we're okay. Trustee Rotunda?
Thank you. Can you speak just a bit more to how you're engaging stakeholders on campus, how you're going about that work to make sure that people know that you're there and are feeling comfortable coming to the table to engage?
Certainly. That's a great question. We have done a couple of different things. We started with some virtual, welcome to the world of COVID, calls with each of the campuses, combination of the president, some of the cabinets, and a number of different groups on those camps from each university and the law school. We then visited each university, and through those visits, we specifically encouraged groups of faculty, staff, students, as well as leadership teams to meet with our team and with the Chancellor's team, and we got good turnout at almost every university. This is just the beginning, though. As you heard, we're five, six months into a process, there will be significantly more interaction and stakeholder engagement as we go forward.
Thank you. Mr.?
Kathy, I wonder, that's a really important question. So now I have two questions.
Gee, thanks.
One is, sort of, will there be an opportunity for anonymous comment? I know that's risky, but we also want to make sure we get to some of the concerns people may not feel free to air. But my actual question was about, could you give, unified accreditation is still a concept for many of us and hard to sort of get your arms around. Could you give an example of how unified accreditation might work with one of these?
Sure. So as far as the anonymity piece, Kate, can you remind me, is the website, are those anonymous comments, do you know? Does anybody know? Kim? There are. Yeah, so there is a website, and at each of our visits, actually, we've encouraged people to check out the strategic planning website and to leave comments. We do want that input. Regarding unified accreditation, that's a great question. The easiest example I find is to think about the unified catalog that Jeff and team are working on, and Jeff, I don't know if that's part of your report. But as we talk to various student groups, for example, one of the things that makes, taking advantage of resources, courses outside your own university, is what's out there and how does it fit? A unified catalog goes a long way towards making that happen. So that's a pretty clear indication of, I think, a direct impact on retention, persistence, and completion, where students can more easily take advantage of courses that may not be offered at their university or that are just of interest.
Thank you. Others? All right, seeing no more. Thank you very much, Kathy. I guess, Jim, you're going to kick off the next piece.
This is the easiest part of the presentation, because Jeff St. John is so easy to introduce. I'm not sure I've ever had a colleague who has been more diplomatic, more likely to walk into a room and calm frayed nerves in ways that make everyone feel they have a voice, they have input, and that he's really listening. So it's just a pleasure to work with Jeff. He has been a wonderful colleague to lead the unified accreditation work with Neti, with the self-study development, with the unified catalog project, and you'll hear him give an update on all of those now.
All I can do from that introduction is blow it, so try to keep things together here. Three updates, brief updates for the board today, and the first two involve our Neti self-study. It's nice to be able to speak to you about the self-study, because my 16-year-old daughter has informed me that I may not speak about it at home anymore, so verboten at my house. First update, brief summary of feedback we've received on the third and final public self-study draft. Because of where our deadline sits and because we've worked backward from the beginning, from that deadline, to share drafts with the university community, we knew that sharing the third and final public draft in mid-May would produce quite a bit of informal comment, but probably not an awful lot of full reading of the entire text at the end of a busy semester when faculty had just finished grading and submitting grades and staff were on to summer projects. So we've had comparatively few responses, although I will say that the Chancellor's spring campus visits were very helpful. I picked up quite a bit of informal and verbal feedback from faculty and staff and leadership on each of the campuses, universities, and law schools throughout the spring semester, and that was helpful in developing where we are with the self-study. Also, we have a self-study steering committee. Members of that committee have read the draft, as have a number of university accreditation officers and others. So we've had quite a bit of input to date. I also feel bad, because I sent the latest draft to the presidents at the beginning of May, just as they were getting ready for commencement and the final blitz in the semester, so I haven't followed up, just for fear of making them feel bad. But I know that they will read it when they get a chance and share whatever feedback they have. Secondly, and relatedly, our plan for completing the self-study and sharing it with the UMS community and with Neti. We are doing, at this point, final copy editing and the insertion of a few last pieces of data with the expectation of completing the content of the self-study by next Wednesday, June 1, and moving that content to UMaine Printing Services. We've worked with a host of people up to this point, and I'll single out UMaine's marketing communications staff, who've been fantastic to work with, along with University of Maine System Institutional Research Staff, and helping us bring the content together. But we do expect to complete the self-study next Wednesday, and barring any concerns from the presidents or our law dean or the chancellor, moving it forward to be prepared for final PDF and final printing and release Wednesday, June 15, which was our target date from the beginning. So you have to thank for this about 145 faculty, professional staff, administrative leaders from all across the University of Maine system, every one of our universities and our law school, contributing directly to that work. When we release the self-study on June 15, we will do so through a chancellor message. You've gotten used to seeing those as the drafts come out. We'll send it to Neti on that same day. We'll also share it that day with President Ross Gattell, who's the chair of the evaluation team, who will visit us in the fall. And then it will be President Gattell's decision to either share it with his team immediately or to direct me or the chancellor's office to share it with them later in the summer. The original deadline that Neti gave us for completing this document was August 21, so we are well ahead of our pace. And by finishing it in June, mid-June, we avoid doing too much of the last stages of the work after faculty are off-contract, which we wanted to avoid doing. We also avoid going too far into summer vacation seasons. It's been daunting enough to go back to the same dozen or so people and ask for favors over and over again, but hitting them up in July when they're on a beach somewhere or trying to be on a beach somewhere is not any part of what I want to be doing. So we will finish on time and publish it on time. The self-study will be finalized in a PDF form. It will also be finalized and posted on a webpage in a reader-accessible form that is ADA compliant, so everyone in our community can read it and review it according to their preferred mode of engaging with it. And there will be a limited number of hard copies, which, for the trustees, as you know, will instantly become collector's items, so you'll be receiving those shortly. We are down to final edits at this point and happy to be where we are at this stage in the process. And I'll share one more update and then answer any questions you may have. And the third update is about the unified catalog work. Kathy stole my thunder, but did a great job in doing so, and I'll get to that in just one moment. I shared a preview with you, the trustees, in January, and then an update in March about the work that we planned to do this summer and fall. And I'm very pleased to say that thanks to the input, review, and consideration by faculty at all of our universities and the help of the faculty senate and assembly presidents at our universities during the spring semester, we have a process and a timeline in place for doing summertime work in three areas that I've mentioned to you before, converting a form that's been troublesome from a paper-based to an online form and trying to regularize it a little bit. That's number one. Number two, conducting an audit of our internal transfer processes, both policy and practices across our universities, to try to remove some barriers to transfer activity that aren't dependent upon the repaving Main Street work, but are non-technical barriers. And then number three, taking a look at the residency requirement and inviting faculty to consider the possibility of an alignment of that requirement. Work in all three areas will be undertaken this summer by me, by the registrars, by a number of other groups, and then we will present proposed changes to the faculty senates and assemblies and the presidents and provosts in September for their review and consideration. And I'm pleased with where we are, because this represents really a true unified accreditation moment in action. We've established a mechanism for system-wide engagement with academic policy and practice with the potential to lead directly to benefits for students and faculty. And that's important, because in finishing that update, I need to share with you that the faculty senates and assemblies shared thoughtful feedback to that process and timeline document that I circulated. I heard back from the senate and assembly presidents, and several of them forwarded notes from their colleagues. And while there are important concerns, which I've responded to, there was nothing in the way of, this is a bad idea, or don't do this. In fact, the opposite was the case. In speaking about this with faculty, particularly during the chancellor's spring campus visits, there was, what I would say, strong appreciation for the effort of the unified catalog project team and a strong desire to remove barriers that have frustrated not only students but faculty on behalf of their student advisees and the students that they work with for a long time. So faculty support to get us to this stage has been essential, indispensable, and I look forward to a positive process re-engaging with the faculty senates and assemblies in the fall. I will once again be reaching out to the senate and assembly presidents, asking for an invitation or inviting myself to visit with each of their groups during the fall semester to bring forward those proposed changes and work with them on the next phase of this work. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the trustees might have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions or comments for Jeff? Go ahead.
If there aren't any trustee questions, Jeff, I wonder, we've talked so much about the self-study, I wonder if it would be helpful just to, for a minute or two, re-ground us in the purpose of a self-study and why that's significant, that it's happening at a system-wide level with unified accreditation?
So we need to show that we are making good on the promise of unified accreditation by doing a couple of things, and actually, trustee Kane mentioned one of them. While we are coordinating and aligning and maximizing resources across the University of Maine system to meet all of our Neti obligations as a system, we also have an obligation to continue to identify and explain to our creditor university identity, mission differentiation, the distinctives across our institutions. When the trustees and our faculty and others read the self-study, what they will see is, in large measure, faculty-supplied examples of exactly that balance. So here's a nursing program being shared by these two universities. It's not only an example of how we're sharing resources across two universities, but within the example, we've tried in every case to say, and UMA is contributing this and UMS is contributing that, or UMFK is contributing this and UMM is contributing that, to show both our strength in alignment, but also the persistent and good differentiation across the things that we do differently and well as unique universities and as a law school operating within a system. That's been very much the approach that we've taken to the self-study, and I'm confident that the trustees and others will see those examples shot all the way through the document.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. A lot of good work there and so important.
Thank you.
Very good. And thanks to the Huron folks for the update on the strategic work, which is also extremely important. And so with that, we're going to now move it to our action items. And I'm going to start with tab 10 of the action items, and that is executive employment approvals, and I'm going to turn it to the chancellor, Malloy.
Thank you, Chair. Tab 10 has two specific purposes. One is to enter into a new, longer-term contract with Dr. Joan Ferney-Mundy, president of the University of Maine, and the University of Maine at Machias, and also has additional assigned responsibilities with respect to research in the system. It is my recommendation that we extend that contract effectively four years from last July, which would mean an additional three years in service to the system. And then secondly, former chief justice of the Maine Supreme Judicial Court and the Honorable Lee Softley was appointed dean of the law school. It was also decided, based on the recommendation of a community study, that the law school should be a direct report to the chancellor's office. However, so the dean has been acting effectively as a president of an institution as well as the academic lead, and we studied the issue of other freestanding law schools and came to the conclusion that she should have the title of president and dean of the University of Maine Law School.
Thank you. Any questions for the chancellor? Seeing none, I'm going to read the motion, and the motion states that the Board of Trustees approves the revised term of appointment for Dr. Joan Ferney-Mundy by four years commencing in July 1, 2021, resulting in an appointment term ending in June 30, 2025, and subject to applicable board policies regarding presidential appointments and the rolling renewal thereafter. Also, point two, approves a new title of president and dean for the University of Maine Law School, or Dean Softley, effective July 1, 2022. Could I have a motion? So moved by trustee Irwin and seconded by trustee Eames. Irwin, could you take a roll count vote?
Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Trustee Kate?
Yes.
Trustee Donnelly?
Yes.
And for the trustees here in the room, if you're in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right. Congratulations to your extension and the new, more responsibility that goes with your title. You haven't heard about that part yet. You probably wondered why I skipped tab nine. It was intentional. Tab nine, I should have mentioned, has been pulled from the agenda. It will be brought back at a later date. As we heard this morning, there was a lot of discussion about it, and there's going to be more opportunity for more discussion on it before it comes And there's going to be more opportunity for more discussion on it before it comes back. We'll move to tab 11. This is confirmation of faculty and student representatives to the board. We have a new student representative from the University of Maine Augusta is Tony Lewis. He will be appointed for a two-year term starting on May 20, May of 2022, and it will go through to May of 2024. I'm not sure if Tony is with us. He is. Thank you, Tony. Congratulations. Thank you. And we also have two reappointments of faculty representatives. And the faculty representatives are, just like the student track or student representatives, are very critical to the input and and getting the information to the board on on things that we need to know about. First is Clyde Mitchell from the University of Maine Farmington. Clyde will be reappointed for a three-year term. It will go from May 2022 to May of 2025. And the other individual is Lisa Le Duke from University of Maine Prescott. She'll be reappointed for a two-year term, which will go from May of 2022 to May of 2024. Again, thank you very much, both of you. I can't explain what, why one is three and one is two. Somebody higher up than me knows why. I don't. But that's, I think it's a cycle of that they go in. And so with that, I'm going to, unless there's any questions, I don't believe there would be. I'm looking, I don't see any. I'll move to the text for the proposed resolution. That the board of trustees approves the appointment of the faculty student representative and the board and and the student, faculty and student representatives to the board of trustees. Can I have a motion? So moved by trustee Rotundo and seconded by the vice chair.
Trustee Kane?
Yeah.
Trustee Kate?
Yes.
Trustee Donnelly?
Yes.
And for the trustees here in the room, signify your approval by saying aye or aye. Aye. And any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. What did you?
President Cummings was going to introduce a new student.
Oh, okay. Moving right along. So when I get to this section, I move fast. Go ahead.
Back in in March, I was not able to formally introduce Sophia Patton. She will be our graduate school student representative. Sophia is a Muskee School of Public Service degree pursuant in policy planning and management. She's also undergraduate in political science at the University of Maine. She is a paralegal now for the Providencia Group. And perhaps one of the signs that she'll be a truly strong and helpful individual is that she was a Casco Bay deckhand on the Casco Bay lines here in Casco Bay. So Sophia, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I think I'm responsible for tab 12.
Yeah.
This is the, this is the sad, sad day of saying goodbye to to Mark and thanking him. But here we go. This is the resolution. Whereas Mark R. Gardner has served the University of Maine system with distinction as a trustee for two terms from September 12, 2012 to May 26, 2022. Whereas trustee Gardner has been an active voice and advocate for higher education over many years. And during his 10 years of service, he set a high standard for the level of involvement for a board member, including service on the following committees: academic and student affairs, audit committee, 10 years; executive committee, seven years; finance, facility and technology committee, six years; human resources and labor relations committee, and investment committee, nine years. Whereas he served as chair of the board one year from May 2021 to May 2022 and vice chair of the board from May 20 to May 2021. He served for several years as a trustee representative to the UM Pap and Paper Foundation, the Board of Trustees, Board of Visitors Executive Committee, the Maine Center Ventures Board, and was a member of the Long Range Planning Committee and the Ad Hoc Committee on Strategic Planning. Whereas he had a great understanding of the fiduciary responsibilities of the trustees and his desire to find reasonable and responsible solutions was appreciated by everyone. Whereas trustee Gardner has been a wonderful leader and mentor, great listener and asset to the trustees. His collaborative leadership style, his many years of experience, and his willingness to advocate for change have made a major impact on the success of the University of Maine system. Whereas his expertise and perspective have added greatly to the quality, vision, and future direction of the University of Maine system. Now therefore be it known to all that we, the University of Maine System Board of Trustees, offer our most sincere gratitude, thanks, and best wishes to Mark R. Gardner for his outstanding contributions to the quality of higher education in Maine, approved on the 23rd day of May 2022 by the University of Maine System Board of Trustees, acting as stewards of Maine's public universities and their nearly 30,000 students, 5,000 employees, and more than 200,000 living alumni. Can I have a motion? Is there a second? I suspect it's just unanimous.
It'd be.
Mark? It's unanimous, right?
We do have to take a vote.
We do have to take a vote, okay. All right. All right, I'm sorry. We have, we have to do the vote on the phone first.
Trustee Kane?
Definitely yes.
Trustee Kate?
An enthusiastic yes.
Trustee Donnelly?
Absolutely yes.
And all here, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Well, thank you very much, everyone. And, you know, 10 years go by fast. And as I mentioned the other night at dinner, it's it's exciting to see where we are. We got our challenges, but a lot of opportunities. And I have a lot of faith in the whole system, the people in it, the students, the faculty, and those around this table. I'm sure you're going to find great solutions. And I look forward to watching and hearing about them. And who knows? I mean, I'll come back and work on a new career. Get a new degree. Law degree. Thank you. Next one is, I gotta move a few things here. Next one will be a resolution. It's tab 13. It's a resolution for James Earle, trustee Earle. And I'll I'll read this resolution. This is hard for me to do too, because he's a great friend and colleague over the last 10 years. I really have great respect for him. So whereas James R. Earle has served as the University of Maine system with distinction as a trustee for the two terms from September 6, 2012 to May 26, 2022, whereas trustee Earle has been an active voice and advocate for higher education over many years and during his 10 years of service. He has set high standards for the level of involvement of a board member, including the service on the following committees: academic and students affairs, six years; the audit committee, six years; the executive committee for 10 years; the finance facilities and technology committee for six years; the human resources and labor relations committee for 10 years; and the investment committee for five years. Whereas he has served as a chair of the board for four years, from 2017 to 2021, and served for several years as a trustee representative on the Board of Trustees and Board of Visitors Executive Committee, the Maine Center Ventures Board, and chaired the Long Range Planning Committee and the Ad Hoc Committee on Strategic Planning. Whereas trustee Earle has been a strong leader, giving thorough and exacting direction to the system leadership. He has been a champion of the system change and a wealth of knowledge for new board members. Trustee Earle is committed and passionate about his work as a trustee and has left a wonderful legacy as of success as a chair of the board. Major initiatives under his leadership include unified accreditation and the University of Maine strategic plan. All the work that got kicked off unto him. Whereas his, under his dedication and leadership, the board of trustees worked to keep the tuition affordable for students, aligned the systems academic programs with workforce needs, and focused on the University of Maine strategic plan. Whereas trustee Earle has been an outstanding colleague and a friend to trustees and staff and has exemplified commitment to the to the University of Maine system through his unfailing availability and presence, no matter how challenging the schedule. Now therefore be it known to all that the University of Maine System Board of Trustees offered our most sincere gratitude, thanks, and best wishes, wishes to James R. Earle for his outstanding contributions to the quality of higher education in Maine, approved on the 23rd day of May 2022 by the University of Maine System Board of Trustees, acting as stewards to the Maine's public university and their nearly 30,000 students, 5,000 employees, and more than 200,000 living alumni. Okay, so I had a motion for this. Moved by vice chair and seconded by trustee Rotundo. Could you take the?
Trustee Kane?
Definitely yes, again.
Trustee Kate?
Rather enthusiastic, yes.
Trustee Donnelly?
Thank you and congratulations, yes.
And for the trustees here in the room, those that are in favor, say aye. Anyone disapprove? Hearing none? Congratulations. Now we're going to move to tab 14. And tab 14 is a resolution for the University of Southern Maine, President Glenn Cummings. This this reads, whereas Glenn A. Cummings has served as the 13th president of the University of Southern Maine since 2015 of July 1, and interim president of the University of Maine Augusta from September 2014 to 2015. Whereas during his tenure, University of Southern Maine has set institutional records in out-of-state enrollment and seen enrollment grow, received national recognition for improvement in student retention, accomplished unprecedented philanthropic fundraising, including raising over $10 million for the Promise Scholars Program, which ensures first-generation scholars can graduate in four years debt-free. Whereas President Cummings has also launched the largest construction project in University of Southern Maine history, one that will transform the student experience on the Portland campus with a 580-bed residence hall and a career center, a career and student success center. He not only laid the foundation for the new Center for the Arts, but also invested more than $11 million of deferred maintenance and upgrades for the Gorham campus. Whereas more students are choosing USM as their first-choice school, with 16% of the incoming class holding a 4.0 grade point average. During his presidency at USM, he has changed the lives of thousands of students for the better. Whereas President Cummings rebuilt trust and value-driven community by putting USM students at the center. And whereas he will complete his service as a president of the University of Southern Maine on July 1, 2022, as he joins the Glickman family office in Portland as a president and CEO overseeing two foundations. Now therefore be it known to all that we, the University of Maine System Board of Trustees, offer our most sincere gratitude and thanks and best wishes to Glenn A. Cummings for his outstanding contributions to the quality of higher education in Maine. This is approved on the 23rd day of May 2022 by the University of Maine System Board of Trustees, acting as stewards of the Maine public universities and their nearly 300 students, 5,000 employees, and more than 200,000 living alumni. Could I have a motion? Moved by some trustee Rotundo and seconded by trustee Earle. Could you take the roll count vote, Earl?
Trustee Kane?
Another happy yes.
Trustee Kate?
Me too. Yes.
Trustee Donnelly?
Congratulations and yes.
And trustees here in the room, those in favor of the motion, say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
I think this is our last one of the day for Edward Cerner. Whereas Edward A. Cerner has served as the 15th president of the University of Maine at Farmington since July 1, 2015. Whereas he led UMF through the pandemic and guided the safe return to campus as the pandemic waned. Whereas President Cerner began the work of UMF Reimagined, developing a comprehensive assessment and strategic recommendations that will demand bold action and an ambitious timeline by 2024. UMF Reimagined will move UMF forward to build a solid structural framework with new strategic initiatives. Whereas under his leadership, UMF's graduate and continuing education efforts have expanded to help prepare the state workforce and secured authorization to advance the renovation of the future home of the UMF nationally accredited Sweat Winter Childcare Center and Early Education Center. Whereas he has continued to foster UMF's dedication to excellent undergraduate and graduate education. UMF was named as a 2020 Money's Best College for Your Money Campus. UMF was also recognized as a top 10 college in five separate categories in the U.S. News and World Report 2022 Best College Rankings. And UMF was the top Maine college to receive the honor by Washington Monthly's 2021 Annual College Rankings as top bachelor college in the United States. Whereas he will complete his service as president of the University of Maine at Farmington in July 2022 as he assumes the presidency at Wintup University in Rock Hill, South Carolina, his alma mater. Now therefore be it known to all that we, the University of Maine System Board of Trustees, offer our most sincere gratitude, thanks, and best wishes to Edward A. Cerner for his outstanding contributions to the quality of higher education in Maine, approved on this 23rd day of May 2022 by the University of Maine System Board of Trustees, acting as stewards of Maine's public universities and their nearly 30,000 students, 5,000 employees, and more than 200,000 living alumni. Can I have a motion? And seconded by Lisa Eames. Lisa Eames, second.
Trustee? Trustee Kane?
Congratulations, yes.
Trustee Kate?
Good luck, yes.
Trustee Donnelly?
Ditto, yes.
And those in the room, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And he's not here. Very good. Thank you. So now we are going to go to tab 16 in the book. Or on the tab here. And this is a naming of the Portland Commons Courtyard. And I'm going to turn it over to Chancellor Malloy.
Actually, with with your permission, I'd like to call Ainsley up.
Okay. Very good.
An effort involving philanthropy as well.
Thank you, Chancellor. And whoa, Mr. Chair and members of the trustees, nice to see you this afternoon. In recognition of outgoing USM president Glenn Cummings, now nearly 150 friends, colleagues, and donors have contributed in excess of $100,000 toward the Career and Student Success Center that's under construction on the Portland campus, with the intention to honor Dr. Cummings with a meaningful related space as part of the Portland campus transformation. In consultation with numerous stakeholders, starting in March, the interior courtyard outside the new residence hall currently known as Portland Commons was proposed as an appropriate space. Now, this has been a little bit tricky because under Board of Trustees Policy 803, naming of physical facilities, a university president has the authority to designate the naming of an exterior space without further approval from the chancellor or the board. However, as President Cummings is a sitting and outgoing president, and the naming is to honor him specifically, the USM Foundation sought permission from the chancellor to approve the naming. The chancellor referred the matter to the Facilities, Finance, and Technology Committee of the Board, which recommended that that the matter be brought before the full board for approval.
All right. So it is here for approval. And with that, are there any questions for Ainsley? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to move then to to the motion. I'll read the motion. That the Board of Trustees authorizes the University of Maine system acting through the University of Southern Maine to name the future courtyard outside the Portland Commons Residence Hall as the Dr. Glenn A. Cummings Courtyard. Finally designated name and the finally designated name. And then the common name will be the Cummings Courtyard. I guess that's important I say it this way.
Before we vote on this, why does he get two names on?
That threw me too. I don't know. That threw me too, I don't know. Apparently he has two names. When he's there, it's formal, and when he's not, it's just known as the Cummings Courtyard.
I think the S is for his wife.
Yeah, so that would be the motion. Could I have moved the motion? Moved by Trustee Irwin and seconded by Trustee Rotundo. Helen, could you take the vote?
Yes.
Trusty Cates?
Yes.
Trusty Donnelly?
And the trustees here in the room, if you're in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, the motion carries. And you got two names on a piece of grass out there.
I think this goes with the responsibility of maintaining the grass.
That's great and well deserved. I mean, it's really, it's. Tab seventeen. Okay, tab seventeen is the Financial and Reimbursement Resolution for the Heating Heating and Cooling System Controls Upgrade at the University of Maine. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chancellor Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tab twenty-four is the actual project. So this was a series of HVAC projects that came to the FFT Committee from the University of Maine. The projects themselves, and there are thirteen separate projects, each with an expected budget of over three hundred thousand, but no project with a budget over two million are included. As I said, in tab twenty-four, they were unanimously approved and are part of your consent agenda. This is simply the financing piece that goes with that. We'll work with with Joanne and the team at the University of Maine and Tracy Elliott in our office and come up with the best terms that we can based on the circumstances when we're ready to borrow. It's a very changing environment. So we'll likely make that call when we get a little further down the road.
Okay. So then the motion reads that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the Finance, Facilities, and Technology Committee and approves the Financing and Project Authorization Resolution and Reimbursement of the Project Expenditure Resolution related to the issuance of debt. And I'm losing velocity, last part. I gotta read here. For the upgrades and to the building, heating and cooling system and controls and updates to the existing building, energy management system and software at the University of Maine with an aggregate principal amount not to exceed ten million dollars. Have a move. Will somebody move the motion? Moved by Trustee Kelly, seconded by Trustee Rotundo. You got to go off, yeah.
Trusty Kane?
Yes.
Trusty Cates?
Yes.
Trusty Donnelly?
Okay, and trustees here in the rooms, those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to to the Vice Chair to cover that.
Thank you. And for our new members, the consent agenda reflects the work of committees, the recommendations of the committees that are brought to us simply to consent and move forward. I move for the Board of Trustees to approve the consent agenda, including acceptance of the minutes as outlined in the meeting materials and the items as forwarded from a May second, two thousand and twenty-two Academic and Student Affairs Committee and the May fourth FFT Committee. The consent agenda items are tabs eighteen through twenty-six in the meeting materials. Could I have a second? Seconded by
Trustee Rotundo.
All those
Trusty Kane?
Yes.
Trusty Cates?
Yes.
And and the trustees here in the room, if you're in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion carries. That brings us to two items that are for discussion. This is not an action, these are not action items. These are the first read of these. They'll be back in the next board meeting for the vote. So the first one is tab twenty-seven. Has proposed changes to the Board Policy one oh three, Board of Trustees Bylaws. And I didn't see this, but apparently I'm responsible for talking about it. If you go into the information, you will see that there is a change. There's a change in section, well, the Article two, Section two point one. And the change is basically, it says if you're going to be the chair or the vice chair of this board, you should be, you have to be a resident of the state of Maine. Prior to this change, we did not have residency in the state of Maine as a requirement. But as we have seen over the last few years, and probably before I joined the board, as you become vice chair and chair, it's pretty much a full-time job, hard to do when you're not around. So it's really something to consider, and it seems like the right thing to do for for the people who are going to go into that to know upfront that there is a lot of time commitment, more so than even as a trustee. And if you can, you really should be a resident here to do that. Now, residency in Maine means it's the same definition as we have for the IRS, six months plus one day. So it doesn't mean you can't go to Florida for three or four months, but you're going to get a lot of calls when you do. So that's, that's it. Are there any questions or concerns on it to be heard at this read of it? Okay, hearing none, I will move that to the next board meeting. And then the next item is a proposed change to the Board of Trustees Policy five oh one, Student Conduct Policy. And this one is going to be reviewed by Associate Vice Chair Rosa Rotundo. Redonit, oh. Rosa, yeah. Thank you, Rosa.
It's one of those names.
Yeah, yeah, too many.
That's right. One day, somebody said, is that Rosa redundant? I'm like, just give me time. So thank you all. Good afternoon. As we discussed coming out of last year's review, there were several items within the procedures otherwise known as the code itself that needed to be discussed and improved. In addition, we gained valuable insight from our conversations with several engaged board members over the summer and fall, which further illustrated for us the need to clarify and streamline the procedures and also to make sure that what was in fact policy and what is the student conduct process was made clearer. Our student conduct officers have spent the last ten months working through every element of the implementation of the code. And the Student Conduct Review Committee, which is comprised of conduct officers, faculty, students, and one of our trustees, contained within board policy, was convened to discuss the policy itself. Today represents the first read of the Board of Trustees and an opportunity for us to discuss with you the changes we are suggesting to the actual policy. We had a first read at the May Academic and Student Affairs Committee meeting and incorporated the suggestion from that discussion that the final approval of the Student Conduct Code sit with a clear line of authority. In this case, the chancellor upon consultation with legal counsel. This change has been made within both the policy and the code itself. So for those of you on the ASA Committee, that is a change from what you saw at that committee. And a final reminder for all of us as we review this proposal. We are discussing the Student Conduct Code, which is not Title IX, and it's very easy to confuse the two. Our policies related to sex discrimination, sexual harassment, sexual assault, relationship violence, stalking and retaliation, and Title IX sexual harassment all sit within a different policy, in that case, Policy four oh two. I briefly want to introduce the six key individuals who have been instrumental in this year's work with the Student Conduct Code. They played important leadership roles within this work over the last year. Dave Fiaco, Director of Community Standards, Rights and Responsibilities, and you're going to hear more from Dave in just a few minutes. He's at the University of Maine. Erica Lamar, Director of Community Standards and Mediation, University of Southern Maine. Erica is going to law school here and is in class today. Nina Lavoy, our Senior Associate General Counsel and Clearay Compliance Coordinator, University of Maine System. Nina is over there. Donna Seppi, Director of Student Success Initiatives and the UMF Student Conduct Coordinator, University of Maine System. Donna's over there as well. And finally, and probably most importantly, Patricia Peard, Interim General Counsel, University of Maine System. And just to embarrass Pat, I do want to say what an honor and privilege it has been working with Pat over the last few months. She is an amazing woman. I got the chance with her, God, twenty years ago, and to work with her again has really just been a total joy, and I've learned so much. Again, today represents a first read of the Student Conduct Policy. We ask that all questions be held until we complete our presentation. It's about fifteen to twenty minutes max. To begin our presentation, I'm going to hand things over to Pat. Pat, do you want me to be the Anna for you?
Well, now you at least know how old I am, since you know how long I've been working with Rosa, so. First of all, it's my privilege to be here today and to bring this to the board. We did have a very good meeting with the ASA and Committee, and they gave us very helpful suggestions. My job right at this moment is just to outline for you generally exactly what it is that we're trying to ask for your eventual vote, not today. Five oh one is a different policy in the sense that it encompasses a policy and the procedures. If you look carefully at most of your other procedures, including four oh two, which, as Rosa pointed out, is the, what we would think of as our Title IX policy. That is not true. They're separated. So what we're asking you for today is to consider, we would like to split the policy portion out from the procedural portion. Obviously, the policy portion would remain with the trustees. They would continue, you would continue to set the tone, the direction as you do right now. If you read it, it tells us about due process, freedom of speech, various other aspects that you expect us to incorporate into the procedures. The reason that we're asking you to take this step is that right now the people who are actually doing the work of putting these procedures into practice, and Dave is going to be here to talk with you about that. But the people who are actually doing that, it's very difficult right now to make any changes. You can't really be that flexible. If there's something that's clear in the procedures now that is not working, that is not functioning well for our students, is not serving them. Because remember, part of the importance of the Student Conduct Code is it has educational components in it. It definitely is not just punitive, it has educational components. So it needs to operate for our students. We need to be, as in so many other areas of the system right now, as we've seen, we need to be more flexible and able to make changes more easily so that we can deal with instances of activity that are not working. Not just for the students, but for the administration and others operating on our campuses. So that's the major reason why we're asking for these things. One of the things you'll find included with our documents is a new statement of the policy portion of five oh one. And I'm obviously not going to bore you to death by reading it to you, but I hope at some point you will review it and take a look at it. We've also included for you what would be the new Student Conduct Code procedures have been included for you. The people that Rosa mentioned, I cannot tell you how much work and energy and time they have put into reviewing the Conduct Code procedures. It's been extensive. And there are other people who've been involved in this process other than the ones who were named. There are many more conduct officers who participated in these discussions. And more importantly, students also participated in the process of putting together what you have with you, which are these new, the new Conduct Code procedures as opposed to policy. The last piece that I will talk about with you, and Rosa will tell me if I've skipped anything, I know. But I, obviously, the procedures under the Conduct Code are not like a phone book, but they're getting there. I mean, they're definitely onerous. But for your purposes, let me just highlight for you what are probably the three things that we've changed, that are changes from the previous procedures under the code. One is simply a cleanup, what I call cleanup. We have gone through this document. There was so much duplicative language, you could get lost wandering among, and then you'd come up to the same language again. We tried to clean, clean all that up. We've also reviewed and fixed the conflict of interest policy under the code so that any of the individuals participating on any of the boards or review portions of the procedures have to clearly state that they have reviewed the possibility of a conflict of interest and that they do not have a conflict of interest. Which is important because I can't tell you, it's a monumental task to staff all these boards and and review systems that have to be in place under this procedure. But we're trying very much to make sure that everybody who serves on these boards is A. trained and B. understand things like conflict of interest and declare the fact that they do not have a conflict of interest. In other words, we have spent a great deal of time trying to tighten these things up. The next thing that I think is important and will be important to a lot of people in this room, sitting at this table right now, is that we have eliminated what was previously known as the presidential appeal level. I have to say that I pushed for this change. I didn't do it by myself, but I did bring it up because, number one, we really don't want our presidents being put in the position of choosing between two students and who ought to prevail and who shouldn't on an appeal. Just as importantly to me, and maybe as a lawyer more important, I do not want to put our presidents in the position where they are going to become witnesses should any litigation arise out of these cases. We, that is not an appropriate thing to put our presidents in that position. So we have eliminated that appeal. I want to assure you that even after eliminating that appeal, there is an appeal process in place that does not involve our presidents. All of our students will have an adequate and an appropriate appeal process available to them under, under the procedures. And then the last thing that we've done that you, if you wanted to go through this, that you would see is that we have updated some of the definitions from of say, for instance, violent crime, Violence Against Women Act. Several of these things were not right in the procedures as they were written now. And we needed to bring those into alignment so that they, we would not be having people look at this and know that it's just not correct. So those are the major kinds of changes that are actually in the new procedures that we've presented to you. And I'm going to stop now and turn it over to Dave, who was previously introduced to you because this is a guy who's in the trench, and he actually is doing the work and has for a while. So I think you'll find his comments very helpful. Before I turn it over to Dave, though, of course, Rosa did not give herself credit. for all the work that she's done, not just this year, but previously on these policies and procedures. So we cannot ignore her energy and effort. So once again, thank you for your attention, and obviously we'll answer any questions you may have at the end.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm Dave Fiaco. I'm the Director of Community Standards at the University of Maine in Orano. We also oversee student conduct issues on the Machias Campus. I've been a Student Conduct Officer at the University of Maine for 20-plus years. To my surprise, having run some data, have resolved over 10,000 cases in that 20 years, which was quite surprising. I do want to acknowledge that the nature of those cases run the gamut from the very tragic and sad occasion that Pat spoke to, to the very low-level quality-of-life violations that we see in the residence halls. I also have worked on several iterations of the Student Conduct Code over the last 20 years, mostly with Nina. So we've seen a number of changes. Oddly, or maybe not oddly, the original Student Conduct Code from the mid-'60s looks very, very similar to our most recent version. We have seen a creeping legalism over the years, and we've tried to embrace that and incorporate that into our Conduct Code every time we made those changes. And we've been pretty successful with that. The flexibility that Pat spoke to is particularly important for us as conduct officers. We are in the trenches, dealing with things in real time and find ourselves having to address serious student conduct issues as case law evolves and develops and having to incorporate that into our current policies and procedures, mostly. I will say that the, the experience of the conduct officers throughout the system, the Erica Lamars that Pat and Rosa spoke of, James Salitis at the University of Maine campus, as well as others around the system, really have a wealth of experience and a real pulse on the, the nature of students today. As I age, I find myself getting more and more distant from students, don't understand necessarily how they think some days. But our younger professionals are certainly very adept at incorporating all of these policies and procedures into student life as we see it today. I can assure you that we are in constant contact with the General Counsel's Office. Almost daily, we're conferring with them on legal issues, policy issues, and procedure issues to assure that we're not running afoul of the law or our own policies. So we have them on speed dial quite regularly for these student conduct cases, as well as the Title IX cases, as Rosa mentioned, are separate policies and separate procedures. So as a Student Conduct Officer with 20 years' experience, I would really encourage you to give this some serious consideration. I think the separation of policy and procedure is an important step and will allow us to be much more nimble, much more flexible as we try to keep education in our student conduct process. Thank you.
Questions, discussion?
Go ahead.
First of all, let me thank you, Rosa.
Question.
You folks have put a tremendous amount of work into this. I think I've been part of this process now for the past couple of years at least. And it became pretty apparent to me early on that the process of modifying the Student Conduct Code was pretty unwieldy, and it was anything but nimble, anything but flexible. And I support this change. I think it's, I think it's very important for you professionals to make the modifications that need to be made. I like the policy aspect of it because it still gives final decision authority to the Chancellor with input from the Board of Trustees. I understand, and I think most people here understand, it is different than a Title IX hearing, and the need to be nimble and not overcomplicate things is important. So I thank you for your work. This is very important work.
Thank you, trustees.
Thank you. Any other trustees? Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. I want to join trustees and thanking, in my case, particularly Rosa, who's been my main contact for all the hours that you put in and to add into this group. This has been a huge, I didn't appreciate at the beginning what a huge undertaking this is. And I join with trustees in agreeing that it's a good idea to separate policy from procedure. I just want to make one brief point about the procedure. And I'm going to be very brief about it, but Title IX cases, which may involve sexual assault, are very serious cases governed by federal law, which can, can result in the ultimate, which is expulsion. And in Title IX cases, there is a little bit more, if you will, due process afforded to both the complaining person and the respondent. And that each of them is entitled to have an attorney present, not just to whisper in their ear, but to actually participate and ask questions. In a non-Title IX case, where again expulsion's a possibility, that same due process right is not afforded to either the complainant or the respondent. For myself, I think it should be. I think the rules should be the same. I understand that these processes are now being separated. And there's a venue for me and others if they want to make that argument about these procedures, but congratulations on the work you've done. I'm supportive of the motion to bifurcate, if you will, the policy from the procedure and the actual nuts and bolts about what due process might or might not mean. We can certainly talk about it another day in another forum. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Trustee Kate. And a reminder that this is first read. You'll have another crack at it in July.
Okay, thank you. Rosa, trustee McMahon?
Just a question for information. Have you seen an increase in academic misconduct because of the use of Zoom and remote learning? And how does that affect this policy?
Yes. Well, certainly during the pandemic and the campus shutdowns, we certainly saw an increase, a pretty dramatic increase in academic integrity issues. That has since abated. So we've seen the numbers drop again very dramatically since we've gone back to being on campus. We do address those, although there is a University of Maine System academic integrity policy that's designed to help faculty manage those, and that's largely where they're resolved. As conduct officers, we do help faculty members manage that. They do these relatively infrequently, and if they find they're having a somewhat adversarial discussion with a student or a student's parent, we can help the faculty member manage that. More serious cases or repeat violators, those that have violated the academic integrity policy multiple times, can be referred to the Student Conduct Process, and then we would move through that Student Conduct Process with the student as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Any other questions? Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, yes. Good information. All right. We're at the end of the, of the formal meeting here. I just want to make a couple announcements, and then we'll go into executive session. The date of the next meeting will be July 11th. And it will be hosted by the University of Maine System. So I don't know if that means University of Maine or where, but hasn't been decided. Okay, they'll let us, let you folks know where it will be. And as the end of the at, as the end of the public session, there will be an executive session following this public meeting. It will be in room 423, 424 on the fourth floor, which is the room we were in yesterday. And we'll probably give people about 10 minutes to get from here to there, and then the doors get locked and you don't come in. So that said, I want to thank everybody for the very good meeting and all the good presentations and information. And look forward to turning it over to our new chair.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone.